The ordinance is for the request for a plot amendment and variance at 112 West Third Avenue. If anyone is here to speak in favor or against either one of those, there's a sign up sheet over here to my right on the table, please sign in. Yes, sir. You don't have to speak, but if you want to, you can. Is that on silence?
No.
Good morning.
Can I still have an update for you on the area behind the sun porch? They were out Saturday, drilling course, to see if we can find where the water's moving from. It's not above ground, it's moving underground somehow. So, the Capione was out there, the city was out there, and the engineers were out there. So, what happened?
Commissioners, are we ready? Ready for this? Good morning. On behalf of Mayor Protem Clark and my fellow commissioners, Manager Madrid, our clerk Rene, listen to me, Angela Torres, I'd like to welcome each and every one of you here this morning. Today is Wednesday, February 26, 2020. It is now 9:00 a.m. This is our regular business meeting. I will now call this meeting to order. Ms. Angela, would you please call roll?
Almo Samo Whitman?
Here.
Almo Kathy Clark?
Here.
Almo Walcott Clark?
Present.
Almo Paul Whitehead?
Here.
Almo Dorsticke?
Here.
Thank you. Our second item on the agenda this morning is silent meditation. I would like to ask each and every one of you to please join me in 15 seconds of silent meditation. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. I would like to ask Commissioner Heschler to please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item is the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda for today's meeting as submitted? Or are there any changes or corrections? Manager.
Jay, I think it's appropriate at this time, before we approve the agenda, to describe the method that we're going to use to select the five members of the planning and zoning. Is that correct?
Okay, you go ahead.
Okay, now, we have eight applicants. From those eight, we need to select five. The way that I'm proposing to do this is we have note cards that the commissioners will write their names on, and we will have balloting. The first round of balloting would be to select five. And this will be while we're here. We'll post those results up on the board. I'm anticipating we're going to have some ties. If we have three candidates that are clearly elected, then those three will be on. We'll have a second ballot for the other two. If it takes more than one round, then when we get down to two candidates, then the commissioners would only be allowed to vote for one. Since there's five here, that would be assured that there would be no ties at that point. After that, process is complete, and this will all be public record. Then I would ask the commission to vote to accept the results of our rounds of election here. Does that seem appropriate? Do I give anything else?
I think the important point, to stress what you just said about this being a public record, I mean, when the commissioners write down the five names, the commissioner will write down their names. So that way, you know, the public would know which candidates the five commissioners have selected. So, I think that's important. And, I think that's basically it.
We will be conducting interviews for the candidates that are here. I'm going to ask you to step out, if you like, if you would, please, and so that we can ask, not we, the commissioners, can ask standard five questions for each candidate. We will be doing at least one of the interviews over the phone. This is all an open session. We're not going to have any closed session for this. And then, as the interviewees are done, then we'll call each one, each candidate back in to interview until the process is complete.
And as far as the gentleman who's going to be appearing to talk about that, of course, the preference would always be to have him in person in the interview. In this particular case, it was not really his fault that he's not here. We had a conversation with him yesterday. And it was, I guess, a misunderstanding as to when he submitted the applications to him being notified that there was going to be the interview date. So, he's, you know, I think he's motivated to at least be participating telephonically.
Right. And then, after the selection is made, then I'll kind of describe the process of how we'll re-infigurate the board and get started and have kind of an orientation. So, with that, Mayor, with that explanation on that's item E1, then I'd ask that you proceed with the approval of the agenda.
And then when we get to the end, I'll ask the commissioners to approve the process that the same act has outlined. Make sure the commission's all in agreement, now we're going to proceed.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Manager Madrid and Attorney Rubin. So, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as submitted and noted?
So, Mayor.
Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda for Wednesday, February 26, 2020, as submitted. Is there any further questions, comments, or concerns?
I just need to point out, there's some misspelling on item E2, the word landscape.
All right.
You got that corrected? Okay, so we're.
All right. There any other questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. The next item on our agenda this morning is item C, the consent calendar. I have C1 is the City Commission Regular Minutes of January 22, 2020. C2, City Commission Special Minutes of January 29, 2020. C3, Acknowledged Regular Recreation Advisory Board Minutes for December 2, 2019. C4, Subrecipient Funding Second Quarter Reports. C5, Lodger's Tax Funding Second Quarter Reports. And C6, Accounts payable for January 2020. Is there anything that we need to remove to discuss separately? Or do I have a motion to approve as noted?
Mayor, why don't I move that we approve the consent calendar as noted?
Thank you. And do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and two seconds to approve the consent calendar as noted. Is there any further questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. The next item is D, public hearings. The first public hearing we have this morning is discussion, action, final adoption of ordinance number 712, amending the City of Truth or Consequences Municipal Code of Ordinances by amending section 14-38 of the code pertaining to water rates. City Manager Madrid.
Mayor, Commissioners, this is Quina. I'd like to start with the presentation before we hear any testimony for or against from Carl Penner, our consultant. And before he begins, I'd like to inform everyone that Scenario B, Alternative 1, is a recommendation of our Public Utility Advisory Board that I concur with. That way, you can pay closer attention to that alternative than the other ones. And if there's any questions for Carl or myself as to why, that will be the recommendation. So, with that, go ahead, Carl.
Thank you, Ms. Madrid. My name is Carl Penner. I'm with Rural Community Assistance Corporation. We work with small community.
Yeah, it's important that you're being recorded. It'll say on the radio. We did this before last week.
Thank you, appreciate that. Again, my name is Carl Penner. I'm with Rural Community Assistance Corporation. We are a nonprofit organization based in Sacramento, California. We work with communities throughout the western part of the United States. Our goal, mission is to build financial, technical, and managerial capacity for primarily water systems and wastewater systems throughout the U.S. I am based in New Mexico, in Las Cruces, and I work with systems throughout the state of New Mexico. The services we provide are at no cost to the community of Truth or Consequences. In this instance, I was invited to work with the city on a review of their water rates and to work with the process to review those rates and develop a new rate structures needed. So, first of all, the City of Truth or Consequences operates under a water enterprise fund, which means that it essentially has, it's supposed to be a self-sustaining water system, bringing in enough revenue to cover all the operating and maintenance needs of the water system, plus necessary reserves and debt payments, and basically managing the water system in a sustainable manner. So, under this enterprise fund, the city has a fiduciary responsibility to ensure that rates are adequate to provide for the sustainable management of the water system. So, looking at slide number three, these are the current water rates for the City of Truth or Consequences. Residential rate is currently $8.15 per customer, and the same applies to the commercial rate. So, $8.15 for both residential and commercial customers. We're looking at a charge of $175 per thousand gallons for the first 7,000 gallons. $193 per thousand from 7,100 to 29,000. $212 per thousand gallons from 29,100 to 50,000. And $233 per 1,000 gallons for any amount over 50,000 gallons. Again, this applies to both residential and commercial customers. Approximately 85% of the customers in the City of Truth or Consequences are residential. The balance is commercial, with just a few industrial customers. So, we're looking at, for these new industrial customers, mostly bulk water sales, where people go out with a meter, have construction activities and the like. We're looking for, at a current charge of $91.91 for the first 50,000, and $184,202 and $222 for increments above that. Some observations about the Truth or Consequences water system. Its last water rate increase was in 2007. So, that's been about 13 years since there was any adjustment in the water rates for the City of Truth or Consequences. Essentially, the city has not been keeping up with inflation, both with respect to salaries that one would pay personnel who work for the water system, and it hasn't been keeping up with construction activities. So, if you were to put in for an improvement, there's cost inflation also associated with those improvements. Second observation is that TRC's water system rates are considerably lower than the New Mexico average. And the final consideration here, or the observation, is that the water system currently is not generating enough revenue to pay for both operations and required reserves for the water system. So, one way to look at this would be to look at the last water rate increase in 2007. If you had a car, for instance, and you bought it for $10,000 in 2007, you would not expect that car to cost $10,000 today. So, essentially, because of inflation and the compounding effect of inflation, that future value of the car, if you were to buy something that costs $10,000 in 2007, the actual price today, the future value of that car, would be about $15,640. So, as with everything, inflation has an impact on the cost it takes to operate a water system, cost it takes to produce an automobile, the cost it has for anything that we buy or services we procure. So, in this case, we're using a 3.5% interest rate. Historically, the Consumer Price Index has been around 3%. But on top of that, we also need to consider the Construction Cost Index for improvements to the water system. So, the price of construction tends to be more than the Consumer Price Index that one would pay for a basket full of household goods. And so, for that reason, a reasonable estimate might be 3.5%. So, again, that automobile that you purchased for $10,000 in, as it would apply to the water system, the anticipated expenses would be considerably higher. Again, on the order of 56% if you divide the 15, 639 into 10,000. Another way to look at this is with selected area rates. So, for systems of 1,001 to 5,000 connections, this information's from the New Mexico Environment Department Water Rate Survey. So, the 2018 average, the water survey average with a sample size of 30, was a residential rate of $33.43. The City of Truth or Consequences current rate is $18.65. This is for 6,000 gallons average household use, which is approximately the average in the City of Truth or Consequences, the residential use. So, what we're looking at is basically the current rate in Truth or Consequences is probably about, looks there about 60% of the state average. This is, this amount, $18.65, is considerably lower than most of the surrounding systems. Elephant View is charging $45.50 for 6,000 gallons, and $40.62 commercial. Again, TRC's rates are $18.65 for both residential and commercial. And, again, as you can see from the comparison, they're much lower than surrounding communities, with the exception of Demming. Demming has a lower residential rate currently, but has a higher commercial rate. A third way to look at this would be just the net income of water system, net income of the system. And from data provided by the city from 2013, FY14 through FY19, you can see most years here that the system is generating net, negative net income. This is before consideration of transfers and reserves out of the system. Upon consideration of those items, the system has generated net negative income for every year since 2013 and 14. So, the system is basically operating in a net negative income mode, and it's not providing for the full cost of water system needs and to maintain the water system. The system condition, this comes from the asset management plan that was conducted for the system in 2015. It's showing that the majority of the components are over 50 years old. Pipes within the system are 29%, asbestos concrete. So, that type of pipe is expensive to remove because of the asbestos considerations, 11% of concrete, and 60% PVC. So, partly because of the age of the system, the asset management plan that was developed for the system is identifying high replacement costs of about $25.6 million that will be needed in improvements over the next two years, not only to address age and components, but the criticality of assets that need to be replaced before they break down. So, in part, the asset management plan will help replace the most critical assets in the system that are in need of replacement. And this was identified over a 10-year period. So, as part of the asset management plan, the community of Truth or Consequences has received a funding offer from the USDA Rural Development Fund. It is $9.4 million, 3.93% or million of that is in grant. So, this funding offer, again, is $9.4 million, of which $5.47 million is in loan. The loan component is 40 years at a 2.125% interest rate. That is a very low interest rate in the scheme of things. We're in a very low interest rate environment right now. But even with respect to a typical mortgage, 30-year mortgage, might be somewhere in the vicinity of 4%. So, this is a very low interest rate for water system. As typical, most of these USDA loans have a sub, I guess I would call it subprime, or not subprime, but a lower interest rate than one might expect to find on the market. So, in this regard, the community is getting a good interest rate value. Some of the requirements, the loan component, like I said, is 40 years. Estimated annual debt payment on the loan would be about $204,000 per year. Other requirements, the system, the funders for these assets is requiring a short-lived asset reserve. And the purpose of this asset reserve is to replace assets that are funded here over a period of time. That way, improvements can be made and funds should be in the program to do so. So, the critical consideration, I mean, would address some of TRC's most critical needs, and it would require about $1.32 million in annual revenue. So, that's to pay for the loan, is also to pay for the required short-lived asset reserves. There's also a debt reserve required over a 10-year period. So, the current system revenues, what's currently, the water system is currently generating, it's generating $885,000 approximately in water sales revenue that comes from customers through the water rates, and then an additional $20,740 in other operating revenue. So, that would be in the form of a standby fee, a meter charge, and connection fees and the like. Actually, right now, the city is not charging a standby fee. But these are, these related to service. So, it could be a late fee or a penalty that would be assessed to customers who pay their water bill late. So, that's a very small component of overall revenue. And that overall revenue is $905,500 per year as of 2019. So, the annual required revenue for the funding offer is $1,323,613. So, that currently is indicating a shortfall of $418,000 that would need to be made up through, most probably, a rate adjustment. It would be what's indicated here, since the bulk of sales do come from water sales. The bulk revenue comes from water sales. So, developments, over the past couple of months, we've been, had several public meetings. At the last council meeting, three water rate scenarios were presented at the January council meeting. The recommendation we got was to look at Scenario B that would provide full coverage for the USDA project. So, Scenario B would meet the revenue requirement, and this option was selected as the option for further consideration. So, during the months of January and February, three public meetings were held to gather additional comments on the proposed Scenario B, the rate structure that would meet the USDA funding requirement. And as a result, at the last PUAD meeting, which was on Monday, a recommendation has been provided for the suggested rate structure. So, some of the public comment highlights, number one was the impact of resident, of the rate increase on fixed-income residents. So, the, there are a lot of people on fixed incomes in the community. The median household income as a result tends to be lower than the state average. We'll get into the HI in a moment, but it's substantially lower than the state average. So, the concern is that people on fixed incomes would have a more difficult time absorbing a rate increase. And so, there's a modification made for that. The second concern was rate stability. So, if we're hit with an increase now, how is this going to impact customers in the future? Are we going to be hit with another rate increase in five years, eight years, and the like? So, the idea here is to provide a modest annual increase based on the Consumer Price Index, for example. You can tie it to a standard metric. Currently, that's running about 1.9%. But every year, as with what a lot of. Currently, that's running about 1.9%, but every year, as with what a lot of systems do, they adjust their rates by this modest amount that can be stand, tied to a standard consumer metric, which is the consumer price index. So the other item that came up was the need for a rate increase at this time. So the response of the public comments in developing the modified scenario B, the rate options were as follows. Scenario B, the modification to that was $17 base charge. It was originally 18, so that amount has been brought down by a dollar. And it would maintain the existing rate structure for the city of Truth or Consequences. So looking at 271 for 2,000 to 7,000, 299 and down the line there. A theoretical base charge for the water system, this is based on the fixed expenses of the water system, that amount is $19 per month. So this would be less than the theoretical base charge. So this is one option, scenario B. The scenario B, alternative one, would be reducing that base rate to $15.50. That would include 2,000 gallons that would help address people that are on fixed income and would need that additional consideration or assistance in, with respect to their water bills. So what this happens here then, it would be $15.50, the base charge including 2,000 gallons, and then a per gallon usage charge of $2.71 from 2,000 to 7,000 gallons, $3.07 from 7,000 to 15,000, $3.45 from 15,000 to 29,000, $3.88 from 29,000 to 50,000 gallons, and 43, 433 for any amount over 50,000 gallons. So this is a second tier that's included at a 7,000 gallon per month break level. A subsequent annual increase would apply to both base and usage charges beginning in FY22. This would be again in accordance with that consumer price index, which again, right now is approximately 2%. But again, this would provide a standard metric on which to gauge further increases in the water system. Scenario B, alternative two establishes a lower base charge, but there's no per gallon usage included in the base charge. So we're looking at $14.50 per 1,000 gallons, at a $1.50 for 0 to 3,000, 270 from 3 to 7, $3 from 7 to 12, 330 from 12 to 20, 360 from 20 to 30,000 gallons, and 375 for over 30,000 gallons. Again, the subsequent annual increases would be based on that consumer price index beginning in FY22. That would be July of 2022, 21, rather. So then with respect, then looking at the impact here, the monthly usage charge, we laid out various impacts based on the amount of water that's being used by residential customers in the system. And so under the original scenario that was presented to council, we were looking at a $20.71 charge for 0 to, for 3,000 gallons usage, that would have represented a 55% increase. For 6,000 gallons again, which is the standard residential use, that would have been 55%. It would have been $28.85. So essentially across the board for these various levels of usage, that would have been a 55% adjustment. So that would certainly have generated the required revenue for the USDA funding offer, 1.462 versus 1.323. The additional money there is, serves as a buffer for the water system because we do not know really what's going to happen to the population of Truth or Consequences, nor do we know the impact as far as the drop in consumption that may be entailed because of the revenue adjustment. So this provides the city with, with a buffer while meeting that, a modest buffer while meeting that goal. Scenario B, the adjusted scenario would be $19.71 for 3,000 gallons and 2785 for 6,000 gallons standard usage. So that represents, for the standard usage, it represents 48% adjustment. And again, it would generate the required revenue, but it would generate slightly less revenue. It would again, pardon me, it would again fully meet the requirements of the, of the USDA funding offer. So scenario B, alternative one, we're looking at an $18.21 charge, which is a 36% adjustment for people at the lowest usage end around 3,000 gallons and a 41% increase or adjustment for those customers using 6,000 gallons. Bearing in mind again that the system hasn't had a rate adjustment for 13 years, then this is really just keeping up with what the system should have been considering all along as far as a modest adjustment in its rate structure. So that would generate 1.425 million and it is, it meets the USDA funding requirement. And then finally, scenario B, alternative two, would be somewhat similar. The adjustment would be 45% for 6,000 gallons standard usage. So again, you'll note that the three scenario B adjustments are quite similar in the amount of revenue that they generate. But you'll also note they're, they're still considerably lower than the Elephant Butte average for 6,000 gallons, which is currently 3709. So with respect to the median household income, I said, I would mention that earlier, the median household income for the city of Truth or Consequences is 27350. This is based on a five-year average, the latest data that I was able to have, which was 2013 to 2017. So the household income can maybe jump and decline in a year. So what they do is take a five-year average to provide a more, I think, accurate assessment of what the true household income is. So for TRC, that is 27350. And that's considerably less than the New Mexico state average, which is about 45,000. Just for comparison purposes, the median household income of Elephant Butte is about So with respect to 6,000 gallons usage, the amount that would be expected to charge, be charged on an annual basis for all water system charges would constitute about 1.2% of that median household income. Under the three related scenarios, the modified scenarios, that would be 1.22%, 1.16%, 1.19%. And you'll notice given with these adjustments that that amount, that affordability ratio would still be lower than the Elephant Butte average for 6,000, which is 1.25%. So the bottom line here is that each scenario, the alternative scenarios would provide some relief to fixed income residents. The current affordability ratio is about 0.8% with current rates. That seems, that's very low by state averages. So currently you're paying, as reflected in the, you know, information about state averages, the community of Truth or Consequences is paying less than what might be expected. At least at our CAC, we would consider anything below 1.5% to be a reasonable metric. Anything above 1.5% would be considered a disadvantage to the water system. So there are a lot of communities that do pay 1 point, much higher than 1.5% and that's due in part to the population in the community. You don't have economies of scale, so there are fewer customers having to pay fixed water system costs. And it's also due to the nature of the water system. So there are some water systems in the state that have arsenic treatment, for instance, and that raises the affordability ratio considerably. So it's not uncommon to have affordability ratios exceeding 2% and in some cases up to So looking at these modifications that were requested, the Public Utility Advisory Board selected scenario B, alternative one as its recommended, recommended option. So looking at this, again, this would provide the, probably the greatest affordability to fixed income residents. Looking at the 3,000 gallon charge, that would be $18.21 and 2635 for the 6,000 gallon charge. So that would represent a 41% increase. The anticipated revenue under this option would be 1.425 million dollars. As you'll note, the rate increase escalates for, from smaller to larger usage and some of the customers in the highest end classes, maybe the public school system might be expected to pay more than the standard increase here. So the primary assumptions for a five-year forecast period, we don't like to look at a period longer than that because of all the variables that comes into play. We don't know what's going to happen to the city of Truth or Consequences population, nor do we know what's going to happen to consumption, nor do we really know what's going to happen to inflation or cost factors such as construction cost factors over a period of time. Those tend to fluctuate dramatically, tariffs affect the price of steel, and there, there are just a number of actors that come into play that the community needs to consider. So whilst the five-year forecast, the recommendation is that the community take a very close look at the adequacy of these rates on an annual basis. This, another assumption is that it's a 3% annual inflation rate and that was for the generation of these scenarios. Again, if your inflation rate is less, say 2%, then your costs would be 2% as well, at least on the consumer price index. So finding a way to gauge the increase to the consumer price index would provide some recognition of system costs. So the third assumption is that there's no new growth in connections or rate of consumption. Currently, you have a base of 3,301 active connections. You have about 147 connections that are in standby or idle mode. The final assumption for this, for the preparation of these rate scenarios was that the rate structure would be implemented in April of 2020. So the anticipated benefits would certainly provide the system with greater financial capacity. It would get you back to a place from, again, not having a rate adjustment in 13 years. It would provide additional capacity for the system and it would enable the system to access certainly a greater funding opportunities as well as grants. So the, essentially the more skin that the water system has in the improvements in the operation of the system, funders will recognize that and essentially provide a greater funder, funding opportunities. So TRC going forward might be able to, would be expected actually to access greater grant opportunities. It addresses the critical infrastructure needs, including the needs of this project, and it fully meets the 1.324 million annual revenue requirement for USDA funding. Finally, it would provide enhanced rate stability. So rather than letting that 3%, 4% catch up with you each year, rather than waiting 13 years to make any adjustment in the rate system, the impact of including that CPI consideration would mean that there would be less of a shock to customers going forward. So going forward, there are a number of ideas or suggestions to raise additional revenue and increase the efficiency of your water system without increasing rates necessarily. Although a rate increase, a need for that increase is indicated at this time, both for the funding offer and just to get you back to a more reasonable position, operating position. One could look at review customer service fees and policies. So one idea might be to charge a standby charge and this is for those connections that are in idle status right now. So a modest rate for that would be beneficial. And then look at your policies. So if there are some people in the community that are truly having a difficult time paying a water bill, there should be a provision or at least consideration of a way to extend terms to those people who are in a less fortunate position and to work with them to, on paying their water bills. So review zoning, again, we did not look, we basically applied the same rate to commercial and residential use. One might look at commercial charges as the zoning gets amended. One could look at charging large commercial users in a class at more money or a higher rate based on their usage statistics. Having said that, one needs to be careful with the commercial charges because there are plenty of small businesses in this community that if you arbitrarily charge a higher amount for commercial use, those, all those small commercial users would be impacted too. And these are people who are trying to make you go out of their business. So the real recommendation is to, over time, maybe migrate to a system where TRC would base its water charges based on meter size. So a three-quarter inch meter doesn't demand nearly as much capacity or as use as So a three-quarter inch meter doesn't demand nearly as much capacity or as use as, say, a four-inch meter. So the idea there would be to look at the meter sizes of the system as a, as you gather complete information on them, and then look at making a new testament there for water use based on meter size rather than arbitrary commercial charge. Another way to enhance the financial capacity of the system would be looking at new meter operations. So currently, meters in the system, and this is some of the information then we received, was brought up during public comment, has been also raised by the utility staff, that much of the existing meter base is old, and as that meter base ages, it is less efficient in registering water usage. So over a period of time, to get a better indication of how much water the community is using, the recommendation would be to implement a meter replacement program. Looking at the audit from, the water audit from last year for the community, it identified approximately 53,000 a year that could be achieved through, through replacement of meters, so more accurate metering. And essentially, that program could pay for itself over a period of time. So a 10-year period, if it costs about $500,000 to install these meters, and one is recognizing $53,000 in gained revenue, then that would pay for itself over a 10-year period. And this, it does take into consideration the fact that as TRC builds its financial capacity, there would be more likely to gain grants for water system improvements, and one of these grants would be most likely for new meter installation. So that 53, or 50,000 a year charge over 10 years to implement a metering program, I, I easily foresee where that money could be made available in, in grants or some percentage Another thing to look at, while you've looked at a water audit, another thing would be to look at an energy audit for the water system. So when is TRC generating electricity to pay for, pay for water use essentially? A lot of systems go to a, a setup where they use non-peak hours of usage from the electrical department or electric, electrical utility to generate their water and then, and then store it accordingly. So that could reduce the, the use of electricity for the water system and also reduce the operating costs. The final consideration here would be to review the asset management plan and review its adequacy and make sure that the elements in there are still appropriate for the water system. Again, it's about $25.6 million of improvements over a 10-year period, but the likelihood as the community increases its financial capacity, it could access grant funding for some of that cost. So as you go out and apply for loans and, and grants, take into consideration your asset management plans, and then adjust rates annually for, for adequacy to make sure that the system is generating enough revenue to pay for project needs. That's all I have. Thank you for your time and letting me present to you today.
Thank you, Carl. Manager Madrid.
Thank you, Carl.
I had some questions. I wonder if you could, you know, just because there was something that was kind of confusing to me. I was hoping it would be clear if we even had a public comment. Is there any chance that we can, you put those, a couple of those tables back up?
Sure.
All right. But go to the, the modified Scenario B, we were showing Scenario B, the alternative one.
This one?
Let's see. It's the one, no, it's the one that, it's the one that had like this table, the twelve.
Two, three tables here.
That's, that's the one. Okay. So we're talking about the one, the response, the alternative one, correct?
Correct.
So, okay, and just to, just to make sure, because I want to compare this to the impact, that table you're talking about on, on one of the other slides. So here, what we're talking about in this alternative book is a 15.50 base charge, and then per 1,000 gallon usage is 2.71 for the consumption of 2,000, yeah, 2,001 through 7,000, and that will be, that's 2.71, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So then, and then you had the next one is 307 for 7,000 through 15,000.
Correct.
So if, for example, someone is using, let's say, 8,000, you would only be charged the 2.71 up through the first 7,000 gallons, and then you'd have to pay the 307 just for the extra 1,000 gallons.
That is correct.
Okay. So that, and the reason I'm asking, let's turn now to your impact table. Okay. Now, I noted on the left-hand side, you have monthly gallons of 3,000, 6,000, and 15,000. But as I go back to the Scenario B alternative, would the 3,000, 6,000 be the same?
No, there would be a different adjustment.
Because I saw, I thought between 2,000 and 7,000, it was just the 2.71, where here, it would show under all, you have a different, you have different numbers.
One would pay, once, the first, for the first 1,000 gallons, one would pay $2.71. So it would be the $15.50 split 2.71, and that would be 18.21 for 3,000 gallons.
Okay. But then 6,000 for 6,000 gallons uses, aren't you still within the 2,000 through 7,000?
The judge.
Huh?
Your chart shows that 2,000 comes with a base rate, but you wouldn't be paying the 2.71 for the first 1,000 gallon.
For any increment over 2, you would be paying that, that, that amount. You'd be paying $2.71. So for 2,000, any increment over 2,000 gallons, one would pay that $2.71 for 1,000 gallons.
So I, I guess what I'm getting, it seems to me that under the 6,000, the 3,000, the 6,000 would have the same percent increase as per the Scenario, the B1 table you're showing me.
But you're looking at the base rate incorporated into that, so it does.
But would the base rate be incorporated both 3,000 and 6,000? Because that's according to this, you're paying the base rate every, every 2,000 gallons, and 3,000, 6,000 would both be over that.
Again, you're getting the first 2,000 increase, so that impact at the 3,000 level would actually be a 36% adjustment. As you use more water than with the additional charges coming in, that, I mean, with the full impact of the, of the usage charge, it would go up to 41%.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm lost. You guys, you guys better than I am.
No, I'm with you.
Yeah.
I understand this Scenario B alternative one. I mean, you know, having the ordinance have those numbers, but I, I'm just saying, I'm just, I just don't think it's, it's consistent with the impact numbers. That's why I'm saying, I mean, maybe I'm.
So that is over the current rate that's being charged, so I can bring that up.
But we're still looking at the base rate and then adding the additional fees into the base rate, and so we get less than what you're noted here.
So what you're, this is the increase over the existing base rate. So for 3,000 gallons usage, that would be $18 over 3.40, so that represents a 36% increase. So in each case, you're looking at the existing rate and the increase over that existing rate.
Each of the comparisons is made with the existing rate, not with each other?
That is correct.
Okay. That's the point.
Okay. Any further questions, Attorney Ruben?
You get it?
No. No, I got a problem with it too. Let me ask, let me see if I can ask.
Okay. You do better than I am.
So you've got, we've got Scenario B, Alternative 1, for example, we're looking at. The first 2,000 gallons is the base charge of $15.50. Right. And then you're going to go to 2,000 to 7,000 gallons, and you're going to charge $2.71, but your impact is going 3,000, 6,000, 15, 50, 250, and Scenario B is going 2,000, then another 5,000, then another 8,000, and then another 14,000. Is that where, is that where you're trying to get at?
Yes, yes.
That's what I'm seeing too. It's not connecting the dots.
Yeah, and the 3,000 and 6,000 monthly usage would, would both fall within that 2,000 to 7,000 range. So it would be, to me, it would be the same percentage increase according to.
Does anybody see it differently than that? I don't, it doesn't make any sense to me in the gallons.
The percentage increase is going to vary.
I think, but George, I think what we're talking about is the monthly gallon usage on the impact statement is not consistent with what's on Scenario B, Alternative 1.
Because if your impact, your base fee is 15.50, and then you add each additional charge for the overage of 2,000 to 7,000, and then you add the 20, excuse me, 2.71, then you come up with the 18.21. And then if your base rate is 15.50, is this where I'm going? And then you go from 7,000 to 15, you add the 307, then you come up with 18.57, where he has the.
Okay, but I guess the question is, okay, Mayor, if, if you're using 3,000 gallons, and I'm using 6,000 gallons, according to the Scenario B alternative one, it seems to me we'd be paying the same. We both would pay the 15.50, and then we both would be paying the 2.71 for the both falling within the 2,000 through 7,000 range. And I just, just, I knew you wanted to say something, but I.
If I may say that we're looking at the percent increases over the existing rates, which was under a different rate structure. So this measures the impact of the percent increase over the existing rates of the system, and that's partly why the, the variance there.
And we're adding levels that did not exist before. Random steps that did not exist.
Why aren't those levels consistent with the, the modified Scenario B rates?
Again, the original, we're looking at the existing rates, which were not under Scenario B. Scenario B was a scenario that was established.
So what you're saying is there's no comparison between your impact statement and the Scenario B alternative?
The comparison is with the existing rates of the TRC, not between.
So the two are not part, they're not even comparable? Is that what we're understanding?
The comparison is, at, at these levels of usage, one could establish any level of usage, but this is the increase in rates over the existing rates that one would charge at that level. So again, the comparison is made with the existing rate structure.
Okay. Can you clarify that, Mancha? It's not working for me.
Well, it's, what we need to do is understand that we're not comparing these scenarios to each other, we're comparing them to the rates that are currently in place now.
So this has nothing to do with the monthly rate structure, Scenario B rate options? This has nothing to do with that?
The percentage?
No, the number of gallons.
No. Well, that would, yeah.
This is to illustrate the difference between the three options, comparing 1, 2, 3 to the whole one, not to each other.
These are selected, selected levels of usage. 3,000 would be for someone, for example, that was on a very high high, on a fixed income and does not use much money, so the, I mean, does not use much water. So these are for illustration at 3,000 gallons of, that would be someone on a fixed income. 6,000 might be more for the standard residential use. You have some users that use 16,000 and then maybe 250,000 for the schools. And then again, one is basing that comparison on comparison with existing rates at those levels.
Yeah, the, the, the rate levels that were in the structure, the 1 to 7,000, 7 to 15,000, 16 to 29,000, those were, were set, and that's what we have our rates based on. And those could be changed also. I mean, that, there's no real, but I think the choice was to keep those as they are. The monthly usage that he shows up there are just for examples, and they're not, they're not, it's not related to our rate structure.
Okay. So I think just to simplify that, maybe I'm, I'm on the same track with you. So really, when we're talking about amending our work, it's really the numbers we should be looking at or just that other table, the modified Scenario B?
That's correct.
So while we may put that up, if you don't mind me, so really, any commissioners and members of the public, when you're giving comments, is actually, we're talking about adopting rates that are consistent with Scenario B alternative one, and I wouldn't really hear the impact.
That's correct.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I, I think I feel like we should be doing.
And those are the old, the old structure. Right. Thank you.
I apologize for that confusion. Again, the purpose was to illustrate some of our, our.
I would say this, I think the good is, from what you're showing me though, I think where the impact table does help is that, as I look at percentage increases, it does appear the percentage increase under this Scenario B alternative one, in most cases, are less than the increase that we contemplated when we met back in January, when we had that original proposition.
That is correct.
So that's the good, so when we're talking about, this is actually, the rates are, in most cases, are going to be lower than what we talked about last month. I think that's really, I think you want to keep in mind. Okay. I've said enough.
Thank you. Manager Madrid.
I think we can open the public hearing now, Mayor.
All right. I will now open the public hearings. I have three sheets here of opponents. It does not look like I have any proponents, so I'm going to call on the first one that I have on the list, and that is Jack Noel, as the proponent to the ordinance number 712. So do you have any comments as a proponent, as an opponent on 712 ordinance? Please come to the microphone.
You want me to do that?
Not, not for this one. This is just the regular, the next one is a better self. And I would like to note that everyone has five minutes, and please identify yourself with your name and address, and stay on topic of what we're discussing today.
Feel free to cut me off any time.
Thank you.
Thank you, members of the commission. My name is Jack Noel. I live at 1048 East Riverside, number 12, number 7, I'm sorry. First of all, I feel that we are in need of a rate increase, that we have low water rates, and it is time to bring everything up. However, I oppose this motion because I feel that it's being rushed through before the election happens and that there are new council people on the board. I feel that from watching and, and listening to the various PUAB meetings and things like that, I feel that our city manager has an agenda to get this through so that it will be completed. The second thing I feel is that we The second thing I feel is that we are sort of approaching, I don't know a whole lot about water systems, but I know about carts and horses, and I know which one goes where. And what I'm feeling is, as I've been observing this whole process, is that nobody really has any numbers. We've had two studies, we've spent tens of thousands of dollars on these studies, and we're still arguing whether it's a 47% leakage or if it's a 12% leakage. In my mind, there's no rush. The problems are so big, in terms of redoing the infrastructure, 50 years old. This infrastructure is not going to be paid for by rate increases, for two reasons. We can't afford it. By the time you start paying off all the loans needed to replace the infrastructure, nobody can afford the water. Generally, infrastructures are financed with property taxes. That's the way you deal with people who are on fixed incomes. You charge everybody equitably, for the electricity, for the water, for the roads, for the whole system. Everybody pays their fair share. But sometimes I feel like I'm in an old kid's book where the Red Queen says, "First the verdict and the trial." But what I don't see is a long-term plan, and I don't see a city commission encouraging the people in this community to sit down and say, "What do you want? Where do you want to go? What is fair? And what kind of systems do we want?" I've read that we have a, we need a new chlorine system. Well, chlorine is one, is problematic, that there are other systems. Ozone is, is an incredibly good system. If you look at the linear feat of replacement of water lines, you're looking at about $150 million. You're not going to pay it with rate increases. Meters, as soon as we start talking about meters here, I go back to a conversation I had with one of the bidders on the smart meters. And he said that, basically, when I approached them, I saw that they wanted the AMI smart meter system so that they could plug the water meter, smart meters into the system. That compounds the problem that you've already enraged this community with. More and more, I see research coming out, Australia, all over the world. Switzerland just banned all of these high-tech things. But I don't want to go there. Don't want to be off-topic. So I think that we need to stand back, wait till we have a new commission, talk about these things in a community-open way, so that we have a long-term plan, 20, 30 years. I mean, if you look at the world situation, it's very tenuous that we may not even have a few left. So anyway, thank you very much, and I encourage everybody to get out and vote, because this is where your vote really counts. It's, we're right on the edge of needing to have some really thoughtful input into what this community needs, what kind of people do we want to attract, and how we want to do it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Noel. Sophia Peron.
Sophia Peron, 316 North Joffrey. And I would like to say I agree with everything Mr. Noel just said, and I think we should not do anything that costs money here until after the census. Because when I hear there's only 4,000 electric meters, and now there's only 3,000 water hookups, how many people actually live in this town? We better figure it out, because a few months ago, about two months ago, we spent $67,000 remodeling the electric company yard. We got them all fake marble sinks, and a new gate that doesn't work, and all kinds of things. And we spend every month. We bought the cops a police station from the Carricos for a quarter of a million dollars. Years ago, 13 years ago maybe, when the water system started breaking down. Oops, we forgot about the water. We forgot that we don't have a dump. We don't have a city dump. We don't have a county dump. And all the dumps that were here when we moved here 17 years ago are either taken away, like several in my neighborhood, or been added to, and they're empty, they're rotting, they're falling down. Why do we want to put a new meter, a water meter or an electric meter on a property that needs to be completely removed from the face of the earth? We need to wait until the census comes in, stop pulling these power moves. You people have no capacity, thinking capacity or mental capacity, to make an intelligent decision about water meters or electric meters. Because it's not going to work. It's just like the gentleman said, it's like attaching some super fantastic device to an old broken-down cart. It's horrible. And I don't even want to say anything else, because everybody in town knows it's falling apart around us every day, and nothing's being done about it. And these meetings keep being pushed on people, hours are spent, hours. We have no money. We borrowed 39 million for a hospital. Where is this money coming from? It's, it's just pouring in here. We got the state bought the Whitehead Chevrolet dealership for them. Everybody buys everything. The Carricos got blown out. Every family, everybody in this town has a deal on the side, they want a NASCAR racetrack. What's the geographical area of this meter replacement? And this water, is it going all the way to the 12-square-mile development we put up near an airport? What is geographical area? Can you tell me?
The focus would be on the downtown area of the.
Mayor, the.
What is the geographic area?
It's not discussion.
This is a public hearing, we're not discussing, so basically.
So we're just getting a guess.
You're just told.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Goodbye. Be nice not to see you again.
Have a great day. All right, the next one is Rick.
Good morning, Rick Dumeak, 705 Charles Street, TRC. You know, I got notes all over the place here. One of the questions is, what's that 9 million going to fix the percentage? That's been battled around. Originally, I heard 33%, now I heard it's like 11% or something of the downtown structure, or how much is this actually going to repair? What's it going to give us for our bang for our buck for the 9 million? There's something out there that says 6,000 gallons is the average usage. I use 700 gallons a month in my house, that's it, I live by myself. I'm not using 6,000. How's that going to impact all these numbers if those numbers are skewed? You know, if we do go with this all B that we're talking about, and I'm really not sure how much it's going to cost and what it's going to fix or anything else, but what guarantee do we have that money that we're talking about that's still going to be here in 10 years and it's not going to be spent somewhere else? That it's just not going to be put into the general fund and gone, and in four years we're going to be going, eh, you know what, we don't have that money we were supposed to have. We're going to default it alone. Bottom line, we need to wait on this. We got a new commission coming in, I hope, pretty sure we will, if everyone gets out and vote. Just wait, there's no rush. It's 50 years old. A few more months ain't going to hurt.
Next person is Ariel Nardi.
Good morning, commissioners. First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Pennick, who's done many presentations before us. And I think also the key thing about a number of the town meetings was that there was actually a lot of public impact and input into the potential of 712. And some of that is now come out in Scenario B Alternative 1. I actually am opposed, and I think another thing that's really important to understand is that the 13-year gap from the last raise is a negligence on the part of you all as commissioners, that you were not really paying attention to what needs to go on in the community on a regular kind of basis. And that gets to one of my points, I'll go back to that. For four reasons, I oppose this ordinance. One is that we are now considering actually a different rate than what's actually published in the ordinance. And I think as the discussion went today, it's very confusing about what the rates really are. So in my opinion, it was really after the PUAB meeting on Monday night that the ordinance then needed to be written. And then today, we would be discussing its publication. And I think that's a, you know, the issue is to try to force this through, to, you know, in general, there's been, you know, a serious lack of listening to the citizens. Fortunately, there's been a step forward in that in this process, but that's the primary reason why I don't think you can really pass this ordinance today. Two, I oppose the 3% annual increase in this ordinance. I think that it, 40% of the population lives on social security in this community, and we do not get a 3% increase annually in that. I think that's a serious consideration. At the simplest level, you should put a five-year clause on it, so that you have to reconsider what the rates are in five years. So you take a responsibility as a commission to address ongoing issues. Three is, there is no commercial rate in the ordinance. I think that is a real disservice to the community, especially as this is all, the whole thrust of this conversation is about the grants and the loan, which is going to help the downtown. There should maybe at least be a different rate for the downtown community related to And my fourth reason, actually, I'll go back to what I said in the beginning, which is that the process, I think, is a little backward. We need to bring issues forward, have public discussion, and then write ordinances based on the public discussion. So I would like to see that in the future. But I hope you do not pass this ordinance as it's currently written. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ariel. Adon Trujillo.
Adon Trujillo, 506 West Third Street. Thanks for allowing me to speak today. I'm not so much, no, I'm not in opposition of a rate needed to be increased, because I think he's adequately shown that we need to get more money to get this infrastructure improved on. I am concerned that the comprehensive plan didn't contemplate all of this. I'm concerned that the comprehensive plan, which was to be updated five years after it was put into effect, and that was October of last year, was not updated. I'm concerned that we're dealing with water as if it's an infinite resource, as long as you got money to pay for it, we'll pay, you know, it's okay. I think we need to educate the citizens how to use less water. I think we've got to look at our own usage in the city and how can we use less water. And I don't think we're doing that, we're not paying adequate attention. I'm really upset about the comprehensive plan not being updated. We didn't deal with water, we didn't deal with parks, and I think they're important for our community's growth. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Ron Fan.
Good morning, commissioners. Ron Fan, 16 North Fosh. I'm in opposition to this ordinance for similar reasons to those that were already expressed. But I want to illuminate this a little bit. Rate increases, as Mr. Pennick showed or spoke about, are for the maintenance and operation of the water system. It is not for the replacement of the water system, which, at 50 years old and aging every year, requires replacement. We have not, in the past 50 years, set aside money to systematically replace the water lines or the water system. I've done a calculation based on the size of the system, and it's, it's, it cannot be done, as Mr. Noel said, with rate increases. This particular $9 million funding offer is to handle 2.8% of the water system's lines, 2.8%. At 2.8% per year, you're looking at a 35-year process in order to, in order to get all of the water lines within 35 years of each other. The cost of that has been, is, will be constantly escalating. And if you want to use 3% a year, the cost of the current operation will go from $6 million for the water lines to $14 million in 35 years. You cannot increase water rates at those rates. This rate includes 2.8% of the, of the water lines, plus the Cook Street. Cook Street, I think, is, is what we should be working on. The actual pumping, the wells, the wells are ancient, many of them are well beyond their useful life, and yet, we're going to look at digging up the downtown. And we've also contracted for a full system audit by Wilson, I understand, to be, to be done soon. Well, before we start digging up anything, putting in new water lines, especially with the very low loss rate that you folks are touting, then I say, we wait until we get that full system audit done. And then we look at funding operate, funding for a two, 2 to 3 hundred million dollar system of water replacement, because that's what, that's what it amounts to, over 35 years. Cannot do that with water rates. It has to be done with property tax assessments, and that, that, those numbers that I gave you included 40% grant money, that I wasn't even, I'm not even talking about the grant money. This is just loan money. 200 to 300 million dollars over 35 years. And that does not include the sewer system, that doesn't include the electric system, it doesn't include drainage, storm drainage for the city, none of these things have been taken into consideration. This is way too quick to be doing something on this magnitude, and throwing away $6 million, which we have to pay for, for 40 years, is not the way to do it. You cannot do this rate increase today. Please, hold off until we have some real numbers and some real ideas on how we're going to pay for it, or there won't be anybody here to pay for it.
Thank you, Ron. I do not have any more opponents or proponents, so I will now turn it back over to Manager Madrid. Questions, comments, concerns?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to, before I give my final recommendation, review the background as to how we got here today, from where we were at our last meeting when we did the initial presentation of options. At, at that meeting, we presented originally three scenarios. One was do nothing. Another one was close to the three options we're looking at today, which is do something and do enough to make sure that we can secure our USDA funding. The third option was to do kind of everything under the sun, way too ambitious and not really affordable. So we took that hypothetical, and after discussion and a decision for publication by the commissioners, we moved from the hypothetical to the practical, using a process that involved the public. Now, after the publication was approved, we held three different public hearings. We held them at different times of the day. They were, they were held on February 12th, the 19th, and the 26th. They were held at different times, noon, 3:00 p.m., and 6:00 p.m. We had two experts, rate analysts, available. We had engineers available to answer any technical questions. We had our city staff. I would like to commend and thank the Public Utility Advisory Board members for attending the original commission meeting and the public hearings. They were informed. They asked questions. And I would bet today, if they had to take a quiz on this whole thing, that they could pass. You can't say that about committees like this in other cities. They also held special meetings to become informed and to make a recommendation. They were entirely involved, and I appreciate that. Thank you. The, these public meetings and hearings were advertised through the radio, through the newspaper. There was a quarter-page ad, I think, on the website, on Facebook. And we did everything possible to inform the public and get their participation. When we had these hearings, the idea was to present the information, answer any questions, and listen. We did not, it wasn't our intent to convince anyone of anything, to argue any points. As you can see, the way that city staff and elected officials and our experts can be attacked like today, when we were attacked at these hearings, what did we do? We listened. We took notes. We listened to, from the outlandish to the very reasonable and the very practical. And I said at the PUAB meeting the other night and a couple of other places, one of my favorite quotes is, "One answer is worth a thousand questions." Well, we got one answer from a valued member of the community, and he's also a PUAB member, ended up being one of our options. We listened that carefully and that seriously. And we took the ideas and we ran them through the process. We didn't just say, "Well, thanks, but go away." We didn't do that. I want to go into a few of the concerns that were brought up and were addressed, that the base rate is too high and would impact our lower-income, lower-consumption customers in the original Option B. That was addressed in every one of the options that was presented to you here today. So we listened to that, and we incorporated it into every single option. There were comments regarding transfers to the general fund from the Water Enterprise Fund. Those in this plan are incorporated to be zero gradually within a five-year period. They will gradually be reduced to zero transfers to the general fund. So we listened to that, and we incorporated it. That higher consumption users should pay a little bit more, and we should, as Mr. Truhiyo said, address conservation. The options do that. And it's a good idea. It is a real selling point and a star for the City of Truth's consequences when applying for water conservation money. In a previous position, we were able to pay for an entire meter replacement program once you put those conservation measures in place. That's been addressed in this plan. The 3% annual increase was a concern. As you can see, that 3%, a 5%, well, what's a percentage? What does that relate to? It doesn't relate to anything. It's just because you want to make more money. Well, that's been changed to be related to the Consumer Price Index, which is a reflection of operating costs of all types and is not decided by the city, but the United States Bureau of Statistics. So that's been incorporated. The, I think the conservation measure is very important. The impact on our citizens is very important. I think every one of the options here today is better than the original. They're all better to the average citizen. They all address the lower minimum charge. They all meet the revenue requirements for USDA to get this funding and assist with future operations. And there is a general agreement in the community that we need a rate increase. Some of the ideas that we have regarding different priorities, we listen to those. And as far as the meter replacement, yes, that is a need. And even if we don't get external funding for that, we're going to start with the fiscal year 2021 budget that's coming up in a few months. And we're going to set aside money for meter replacement every year. I don't know how aggressive that plan can be until we actually look at the budget, but I committed to the PUAB that that will be in there. So that is part of the plan. The idea that this is way too quick or there's no rush is disputed just by the amount of leaks that we see in our system every summer. We can't wait any longer. We waited thirteen years. And this is a good start. It's not a solution to everything, and it doesn't take care of our system forever. But at least we're getting close to catching up on where we should be. And Mayor, in regard to leaving this for a future elected body to take care of, I'll use a term that I've heard over and over, and that's kicking a can down the road. We've been doing that enough. And I think, as a former elected official, you all understand that you are to serve and to decide up until your last day. And I know you accept that, and I very much appreciate it. And with that, I concur with the PUAB's recommendation. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any other questions, comments, or concerns?
I'll go ahead and also make a couple of observations.
Thank you, Attorney Rubin.
First of all, when this is the obvious statement, but the summary argument that was being proposed, is that we're here to vote on ordinance. And what we're talking specifically about is the ordinance, which is in your packet, but the difference being that the numbers are different. The numbers that are in the packet are, the numbers that are, I'm sorry, the rates are actually not going to be what's reflected in the packet, but actually the numbers which are reflected up there on the video, you know, on the video board there. I want to address actually a comment from Ms. Dari, because Ms. Dari, I have actually the same question that you have regarding the question of publication and notice. Specifically, the question is, you go to publication on one, on one idea, and we're coming back actually and voting on something else. So the question is what the legality was of that. And to research this, I had also contacted John Appel, who does a lot of work. John Appel Korsler is our associate attorney, and I frequently would rely upon him to answer questions of subordinances, elections, et cetera. And what, of course, he reminds me of, of course, the city commission, seeing your legislative capacity, of course, you always have the ability and the authorization that when you come back to debate something in a legislative fashion, as you are now, you always have the right to come up with amendments when you're having a final hearing. The second thing is also, let's make the opposite. This is the reason why I asked Mr. Pennick this question, is that, as I understand it, for the vast majority of users here, the rates that they would be charged are less on the best scenario B than it would have been what we had suggested over a month ago. Is that correct, Mr. Pennick? Right. So I wouldn't expect any kind of judicial challenge from anybody who's going to be paying less per voting line today than what we had talked about about a month ago. With respect to the other users, we did go through the process here. When we had the meeting back in January, we did make the comment, "Well, you know what? This is really an initial idea, but we are going to get public input on this." And it wasn't really just a public hearing today, but we did establish all these public hearings over the last couple of weeks, as I understand, or over the last month. And as I'm hearing, there was at least three public hearings. There was a Public Utility Advisory Board discussion, and they made a recommendation. So I think that you have a situation here where I think that we have gone above and beyond really what you'd expect when you're adopting an ordinance as far as the public having knowledge, having notice of what we're talking about, and input. So for those reasons, I'm going to give the opinion that, yes, I do believe that you are within your legal right to adopt the ordinance with the numbers which are up there if you just choose to do so.
Thank you, Attorney Rubin. At this time, I will go ahead and close this public hearing and ask for Manager Madrid to give his recommendation as to what his determination is here.
Mayor, Commissioners, while I'm waving around this idea. Thank you, Mr. Petrich. That's how simple and how down-to-earth some of the suggestions could be. They were all considered. I concur with the PUAB's recommendation and ask for your approval.
Thank you.
Scenario B, Alternative 1.
Thank you. At this time, I will stand for a motion for the final adoption of Ordinance Number 712, amending the City of Truth or Consequences Municipal Code of Ordinances by amending Section 14-38 of the code pertaining to water rates as noted by Mr. Pennick today and scenarios given by Manager Madrid and also Attorney Rubin. Do I have a motion to approve?
I make that motion.
Thank you. And do I have a second?
A second.
I have a motion and a second for the final adoption of Ordinance Number 712, amending the City Code, the City of Truth or Consequences Municipal Code of Ordinances, as noted. Is there any further questions, comments, or concerns?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a few comments. And first of all, I would like to thank the PUAB for the work they have done and particularly for this, I think, very astute amendment of the initial recommendation. It really addresses the issue of our, the lower-income portion of our population by keeping the cost increase to them at a minimum whilst still maintaining, you know, the required level of income. I think we do need to do some further studies on this. There were some recommendations, like Mr. Pennick expressed, a recommendation that we base our commercial charges on the meter size. That's a very valid point that we need to be looking at. And include the establishment of a standby charge. I think that's another good thing that we need to address in the future. This really is, it's not a final action. This is a step we need to take toward the modernization of our system. And as Mr. Finn put out, this will not pay for everything. We have to look at other options. And I've noted before, our property tax rate in this town is pathetically low. That is something that needs to be addressed because that, and again, that's another way of securing our financial status. That's something we need to, this is a step forward. It's not a final action. And the other thing I want to point out is that when companies come in and bid on doing work for us, all right? They look at the project, they look at the scope of the work, and they make their recommendations based upon what is going to cost them to do the work. The one factor they do not take into consideration is what is the median income level in the town that they're bidding. It doesn't matter if your median income is $25,000 or $250,000 per year. That project is going to cost you the same amount of money to do. But I think we need, and we need to really understand that. Yes, we have a low median income, and I think this proposal addresses that very, very well. And it's a lot better than is being done in many other communities. And I also believe that we do need to look at water conservation. That is a huge issue that will be, that will be becoming more critical in the future. I mean, there are many places right now where they have to truck water into the, in other countries, where they have to truck water into villages just to give them water to drink and wash with. We have a very good water supply here, a very healthy aquifer. And yes, our wells are aging, but they've been performing very well for us, and we need to be grateful for that. That's enough.
Thank you, Commissioners Agini. Is there any other questions, comments? May I approach him?
I have a couple of things. One is, when we put this to publication in January, I remember asking, because I was not in favor of this 7/2, 7/12. And the storyline was that we're publishing it, then we'll take it to the public, and then we'll take it to PUAB. I do believe that it's been done a little bit backwards. And that's a little disappointing to me. But I do believe that the PUAB has listened to public comment also and has made an extraordinarily brilliant recommendation on this one, that this ordinance would have to be totally modified to represent Scenario B, Alternative 1. I do, if it's okay with you, Mayor, I'd like to ask Jesse a couple of questions.
Sure. Jesse, can you come to the podium, please?
Jesse, my understanding that this first section of doing something that is downtown isn't all just downtown? Isn't it doing some other work apart from just the downtown lines? And the other question is, do those downtown lines actually feed residential districts also?
Yes, to both of those questions. There is other aspects of this project that we'll be addressing. Cook Street will be getting a larger tank. They will be addressing the pumps that pump water primarily to everywhere in the city. In fact, it's about a third of the overall cost is actually going towards the Cook Street improvements and upgrades, which is going to increase our storage there. We're going to more than double our storage capacity for water at that location. The importance of that is that it has contact time for chlorination. We have to have a 30-minute contact time minimum. And as our water demand grows, it's harder for us to realize that contact time, which means that we actually have, we have to strategically plan our pumping times with the wells so that we can have that contact time before we transfer that water to the middle zone and the upper zone, to where we're distributing it to the public. As far as the downtown lines goes, that, those are primary feed lines that do distribute down all of the branch roads. I'm going to be off a little bit, but MAR, Post, all of these side roads that go down towards Austin Street and further beyond. So yes, those are main transmission lines that are carrying that water. Part of that project is also going to be improving our valves, which, as we, as I've developed and grown into this position, I've learned that the downtown area is very susceptible to, if we have an emergency, everybody has to be shut down. I can't go and just shut down this block of Broadway if we have a main break. This is going to be addressing that, and that's because those valves are aged and they just are either broken or they don't function properly. They don't close far enough for me to fix the problem. So then I have to expand my area of shutdown. This is going to be addressing those concerns as well. It's not just replacing the water lines. We're going to get new fire hydrants. We're going to get new valves. We're going to get a better material in the ground. And it's going to be another 50 to 100 years before we have to worry about this area of impact, which is a big area of impact because this does feed a lot of the residential areas going up, Purging Street as well. does feed a lot of the residential areas going up, Purging Street as well, Above Street. So this is a main hub, might you say, where that main water feeds to other residential areas.
Jesse, thank you very much, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, I thought it was very important that you hear this because this is not just specifically downtown. This is very important for us to take care of the Cook Street and to be able to deliver to these other residential areas also. So that being said, I just wanted to say that I really appreciate some of the comments that I heard from the public. And the only other concern I have is why we picked a 3%. I think this needs to be looked at again in five years. And I kind of wish, and we brought this up before, that we tied things to the CPI index, which is what Social Security is tied to. Because if it's, if it's a one-and-a-half percent increase on the Social Security and we're doing 3% or 5% like we're doing in its sewer, then people are actually not holding up quite as well. And I would like, just to make that comment, that I agree that, that 3% is nice, but I think that the CPI varies a lot. And I wish that we could tie it to CPI instead of just a percentage.
It is. It is Commissioner. It is tied to CPI.
Okay.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Commissioner Heschler?
I'd like to make just a couple of comments. One is that, you know, four years when I started here as a Commissioner, this was an issue then. Another nine years before that, this was an issue. So I'm, I'm glad that this Commission is finally able to handle it and deal with this, this problem. We're the educated ones with this infrastructure situation, with the water problems that we have. We've been here, I've worked with them some of your four years, some of them two years, some of them a year and a half, but we've dealt with this thing constantly for that time, and we're in a better position now to make that decision, then passing it on to a future Commission, which has got to be behind in the learning curve and learning the, learning all the things that we've learned over the last four years. So for that reason, I'm very glad that we're finally tackling this issue and dealing with it and moving forward. So thank you for that.
Thank you. And I would just like to thank everybody that worked on this, be it the public that was in attendance at the meetings, be it the Commission that put this on the agenda to go forward with it, Mr. Pennick for all your hard work at, at putting everything together, for staff. You know, water issues, I mean, I've lived here all my life, and, and water issues have always been a problem and have more so been problems in the last few years that I, I can see of. And so, again, this is a start. This isn't something that is set in stone and that, you know, we're gonna, we're, we're gonna do this forever and ever, but I hope this is a continuing project that we work on and we make changes to and, and that the public be involved in helping us make changes and, and become, you know, a continuing community that works together and strives for, for our citizens. So with that, we have a motion and a second.
Does that motion need to also say that everything in this 712 is published right here will be amended by the PUAB board? Recommendation?
I thought the motion did say that, but I thought Commissioner Heschler already made the motion.
Did you make that?
No, no, it was Mrs. Heschler. Sorry, yeah.
Okay, okay.
At this time, I will ask if there is any more questions, comments, or concerns. If not, Madam Clerk, I would like roll call on this, please.
I'm Bill Sandra Whitehead.
Aye.
I'm Bill Taffey Clark.
Aye.
I'm Bill Walker Clark.
Aye.
I'm Bill Burks.
Aye.
Motion carries, and thank you. The next item on our agenda this morning is the second public hearing. This is requesting action for a plat amendment and variance at 112 West Third Avenue pursuant to Chapter 15, Section 1517, amendment of plats. This will be a batter shell hearing, so this will take a little different format, but at this time, I'm gonna go ahead and turn this over to Manager Madrid.
Mayor, well, I call on Tracy to come up and give us the background on this item. I want to thank the Madam Commissioners sincerely for taking a step forward today. We did take a step forward today.
Thank you.
Good morning Mayor, Mayor Carton, Commissioners. The reasons for the public hearing today is we have applicants Dan Steele and Eddie Gonzalez here that wish to split the lot at 112 West Third Avenue. All applicable forms have been received, including the ultimate summary plat, a fully-completed application, proof of taxes paid to date. All fees have been paid, certified mailings have been sent out. Both lots comply with the standard for lots and have access to city utilities. Under Article 5, Section 11-5-5, specifically A1, resulting in unnecessary hardship, avariance will also be requested from Chapter 15, Section 1515A to B that states both lots to be created to have direct legal unobstructed access to existing city maintained in Cave Street with curb gutter and sidewalk, that already doesn't have the curb gutter sidewalks. So they're requesting a variance from that. Applicants are in attendance, and with that, I stand for questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the Commission? Attorney Rubin, anyone at this time?
I think I signed up to speak either.
Yes, and I'm gonna go ahead. I just wanted Tracy to present, and then I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. But before I do open the public hearing, I want to make a few, a few comments that I've kind of observed in several meetings. Again, we, the Commission, are sitting here in a public meeting. This is a work, a working meeting, okay? I do notice that a lot of folks out in the, out in the audience kind of chit-chat to each other, or they may have cellphones that go off. So in the future, I'd like for everybody to make sure that they have their cellphones turned off, and if you have to chit-chat with each other, please exit one of the doors and do it outside. You know, it, it, it's kind of distracting, and it's very rude. So again, remember, we're here to conduct business, and we, when we ask you for public comment or a public hearing and call on you, then you come to the podium and, and speak in your turn. But if it's not your turn to speak, then, then you shouldn't be visiting and talking and, and whatnot with the Commissioners. And again, you know, I, I've noticed this at several meetings, and I just want to, I just want to point it out that in the future, we're here to conduct business, okay? And again, I thank you. At this time, I will open the public hearing. I do have some proponents and opponents. I have two proponents this morning, and I would like, when I call your name, if you can stand up, please, because you will have to take an oath. I have Tony Gonzalez and Dan Steele. Those are the proponents. And I have an opponent of Jack Noel. Can I get you to stand up and take an oath, please? And our Clerk Angela will give you your oath. If I can get everyone to raise your right hand. And Mr. Finn is also on there? Okay. Ron?
Everyone's on the panel.
Is there anyone else?
I guess I'll just, I'll just.
Thank you. Okay, thank you for taking that oath, and what I'm going to do is, I'm going to, Tracy has identified what we are here for today. The two proponents that I will call this morning, the first one will be Tony Gonzalez. And remember, everyone that approaches the podium, you have five minutes. I'd like your name and address, and then tell us why you are here.
I'm Tony Gonzalez. I live on 1202 East 8, and I'm gonna pass this on to Dan Steele, as we're both involved in the same property. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Dan Steele?
Honored Commissioners, I'm Dan Steele, 1202 East 8th Avenue. And we are hoping to subdivide this property with the hope of selling the building at the, the, on the west end of the property. So we've owned this property since July 1st, and as most of you know, it was a terrible, terrible, huge project. And we're making great progress. We've torn down three old buildings with dilapidated apartments, and the property was riddled with crime and drugs, and I'm sure everyone knows. But anyway, we've made huge progress, and for us to continue in improving it, we would like to sell the building at the west side, and that's why we're asking for this subdivision. And we're asking for the, the furnished to be 53 feet on Third Street for the purpose of retaining three large trees in our east part of the property. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, the propos, the opponents of this are Jack Noel.
Thank you Commissioners. Jack Noel, 1048 East Riverside, and very shortly, I have no problem at all with this application. I think what they're doing is a great thing. My only comment is that on the, on the board here, we sort of have another cart and a horse problem. If it's going to be resolved, I can see, but legally, I think that we should have put our focus on the Planning and Zoning Board to get that back in order before we continue on with Tracy's analysis and recommendations, although I'm sure that she does a fine job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Noel. Ron Finn? He's also listed as an opponent.
Yes, and I am an opponent of Ron Finn, 316 North Foch. I'm only an opponent not to the process, or not to the project, but to the process. Once again, after numerous public hearings, at which you have done variances and issues that need to go by law to the Planning and Zoning Board, not to the Commission, this is definitely one of them. Read the process for summary plat changes, and you will see that it is the Planning and Zoning Board that makes the recommendation, not a zoning administrator who works for the Planning and Zoning Board. You have no authority to do so, and nor do you until you get the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Board. I do not believe that, under this circumstance, you've waited seven years to reinstate a legally required part of this city, which is the Planning and Zoning Board, and only now you're thinking of doing it, and yet you still have the audacity to run a, a, a vote on something that is not being heard by a Planning and Zoning Board. It's a slap in the face. And it's, it can be challenged as a legal issue, because you don't have the authority to do this. And so I'm recommending that the first thing that you do is you establish a Planning and Zoning Board and give this issue to them as their first, as their first process. And then it will be done legally and properly for the first time in seven years. And I don't believe that the sale of this process, or this, this property is going to be adversely affected by another month, for instance. Things don't sell that quickly around here. And I think that it's more important that we show our citizens that you folks are just as concerned about following the law as you want them to be. You set an example. You set a bigger example for the public, because you were sworn to uphold the laws of this city, state, and country. Average citizens have not sworn that, and yet you expect them to follow your codes of ordinance. Please table this matter until after Planning and Zoning has been seated and can deal with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. So they, I do not have any more opponents or proponents. At this time, I'm going to ask, is there anyone in the public that would like to make comment on this?
And Madam Mayor, I have one recommendation, maybe this is a big appropriate question for, for Tracy. Tracy, can I assume that through our normal course of business, that actually the landlords who are within the zone of interest have already seen notice of what's going on and noticed this?
Yeah, all certified mailings went out. I have copies of those.
Okay, and has anybody made any objection to you about this process?
No, I've heard not from anybody.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. I did see one hand. Could I get you to come down to the podium and state your name and address, please? And are you, and you're just the public that will be...
Correct. Rick Mx, 705 Charles. Regarding the Planning and Zoning applicants, I'm curious, my name isn't up there. I did put an application in several weeks ago.
Yeah, that's, we're not working on that right now.
I know, I think it's the only way I'd be able to say something about it.
Yes, so this, yeah. Thank you. Do I have any questions, comments, concerns from the Commission? May I approach him?
Okay, Attorney Rubin, I think we've been through this once or twice, but without the Planning and Zoning Board, and it wasn't until just recently, we had application, and I remember making a comment that we had, when we were going down to three, and we had, we were trying to figure out the Planning and Zoning Board, and my understanding from legal was that until it was in place, the Commission actually was in fact the Planning and Zoning Board. Is that not correct?
Correct, correct. You are, you are the final authority. The Planning and Zoning Board would just be to make a recommendation. So I mean, I'm Bob, and I just have recommendations for your benefit. I mean, you don't, you're not required to have that. You're, you're the final, final authority, and I'm not really aware of a legal challenge anyway. That was the reason why I asked and reported that, that last set, set of questions. The people who really don't have the home, who are standing to challenge this, are the people who are notified of what's going on, they were notified with the proposed action and today's hearing, and nobody's here to object to it.
And Commissioner Heschler, I heard something that you said earlier about, you know, people who've been around for a while and have been working on a project have more understanding of what possibly needs to be done, and even with a brand-new Planning and Zoning Board, there's gonna be a learning curve with them too. So I think it's very important that the P and C Board get put together, that they're gonna need some time to get as functional as the PUAB Board has been, in my opinion. That's just my opinion, but I wanted to make that comment also, that I agree that it's been a problem that we haven't had a P and C Board, because it's nice to have a group of people that specialize in the subject. So we've just done the very best that we can, but I'm absolutely pleased. I've been in this building before when it was owned by that fellow Mike from Australia. I don't know if any of you guys have been in that building, but it was absolutely atrocious. And it just pleases me to see somebody go in and take a dump and turn it into something that at least is a more appealing to the eye.
Thank you.
That's my comment. Thank you, Mayor.
Do I have any more questions, comments? Commissioner Zeggy?
Just, just a brief one, and whereas I, you know, I understand Mr. Noel and Mr. Finn's comments on, on delaying this, and if there were, were any controversy at all on this, I would, I would definitely push this, you know, push this back and, and let the newly-formed P and C Board look at it. But being that it is, it is such a straightforward project, there's no, no objections to it, no, no challenges to it, I, I think it would be, would not be necessary at, at this time. We can, it's very straightforward, we can handle it by decision here, get it off the chart, get it off the table, and move on to some of the other issues.
Thank you.
I agree with that.
Do I have any other questions or comments? If none, I will stand for a motion to, for the plat amendment and variance at 112 West Third Avenue as presented by Tracy, and comments may not. Do I have a motion?
Make that motion as noted.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the plat amendment and variance at 112 West Third Avenue pursuant to Chapter 15, Section 1517, amendment of plats. Is there any further questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposing, sign. Motion carries. Thank you. All right. The next item on our agenda this morning... All right, the next item on our agenda this morning is item E, new business. The first one is discussion action. At this time, we have interviews and appointment of members to serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission, City Manager Madrid.
Mayor, as we've, uh, discussed in the procedure before, at the approval of the agenda, I'd like to call on any candidates that are in the audience to stand and follow our city clerk, uh, out to a waiting area, not outside, to a waiting area while we interview candidates here in the chambers, one at a time. After your interview, you'll be welcome to, to stay here, of course. Uh, do we have any of the candidates here? Okay?
And, and I have a list here of four questions, and I will be asking each one of you candidates and applicants the same question, and then the fifth question will be opened up to see if any of the other four Commissioners have a separate question. So, again, each one of you will answer, uh, the same question, the same four questions, and then, like I said, the four Commissioners will ask a different question. And again, thank you all for your applications, and we will call you in. Well, what I'm going to do is I'm just going to go ahead and do it as it is on my agenda, so our first applicant is Ron Finn.
I, I also have a motion made that we approve the procedure that, um, uh, Manager Madrid outlined at the very beginning, make sure the Commission don't overturn that.
Right, and before our meeting earlier today, Manager Madrid, uh, expressed and, and explained the process of this, uh, interviews and, and voting and whatnot. Do I have a motion to approve his suggestions to proceed forward with, with this plan?
I'll make that motion.
And do I have a second?
Second.
I have a, a motion in a second to proceed forward with the plan as described by Manager Madrid on the process of these applicants. Is there any questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Again, thank you, and we'll call you back in, in just a few minutes, and, um, our first applicant on my list here is Ron Finn. Ron Finn, could I get you to, are you-
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I did put my application, but I'm not up on it. Was I, is that a poll, or is my name ignored, or what happened?
What is, no, what is your-
Richard Dunia.
Richard Dunia.
I don't know.
We didn't have an application.
I don't have an application here.
We visited the city clerk over five weeks ago.
Um, visit with the city clerk out here and, and, let me see, hold on.
Mayor, I have no power to talk to you, but I have to. I don't have power to talk to you.
Come on, if, can I get you to follow me out here, please?
Certainly.
I'm going to see you. Great.
She's from Vegas.
I had to pick.
No, he didn't.
We're going to drag it on all day.
I thought you were going to make a special announcement.
The whole idea.
It's your last day here, we're not going to let you off easy.
Which Roman thing do you want to use at the moment?
Throw away those markers, they're very rude.
Should we order a pizza now?
I didn't, I didn't order one, but say what that, bear knucks if necessary.
Um, sorry for the little bit of confusion here. So, is there any other candidate or applicant, um, in here other than Ron? Okay, Ron, can I get you to approach the podium, please?
She's not back there.
Okay, we'll just give him a few minutes. Angela, what does daddy do? And Chris Sisney, I didn't see him. Lois is here, what about World?
I think Mayor-
James Bush?
Let me get the names.
Okay, all right, well, we're going to go ahead and get started then. Ron?
Good morning.
Good morning. Um, I, uh, thank you for your application, um, to be part of the Planning and Zoning Board. Um, I understand you've given us a little background here, and maybe some of these questions that I will be asking this morning are duplication of what's on the application, but again, this is being done in public, so I would like for the public to be aware of, of what your criteria is and, and what your ability to be on our Planning and Zoning Board is. So I've got four questions. Again, each of the applicants will have the same four questions, and then I will ask, um, each one of the other Commissioners if they have any additional questions to ask you, um, at the end. So our first question this morning is, why did you apply to serve on the City Planning and Zoning Board?
I applied, this is not the first time. I was once appointed to the Planning and Zoning Board, and then promptly unappointed. Um, so, I do have an interest in it, this goes back many years. I've done a lot of, uh, reading of the planning and zoning requirements and ordinances. I know the city code, and in order to maintain a proper community, you cannot have chaos, and that chaos is created by not having proper planning and zoning. And, uh, variances, as I have always held, are violations of our code and should be very, very stringently examined before they're handed out like candy. Otherwise, the community falls apart, it becomes chaotic and meaningless for long term, and communities are supposed to be here long term. The people who are sitting here, you all, serve the people, not the other way around. And it's very important that you understand that. I do understand that. I also understand that we are a nation of laws, and if we don't abide by our own laws, then we violate them, and the laws concerning planning and zoning are as important as any other laws.
Thank you, Ron. The second question is, please describe your qualifications to serve on the Commission, on the Planning and Zoning Board.
I have seventy-six years of experience as a human being. I've been, uh, learning ever since, uh, I began. I have worked extensively in management fields, training managers, and I know what the process is.
Thank you. If you are selected, what do you have to offer as a Planning and Zoning Commission member?
I have my time. I have a great deal, not a great deal of time, I have all the time I have, um, and I'm willing, as you know, to expend it for the benefit of the city. And the time, the research, the, um, examination of the processes, these are all things that I've done before, even when I was not selected as a member, or when I was rejected originally as a member of the Commission. I've still followed it, I have testified at any number of planning and zoning related issues before you all, which you know, and that's what I have to offer, and I will be fair, because this is my city.
Thank you. And my last question is, um, if you are selected, um, as the Planning and Zoning Board member, describe your role as the member that you see that your role would be as a Planning and Zoning Board member.
Well, my role would be one of five, um, to examine issues that come before us, also to make proposals for planning for the future for the city, which has been terribly inadequate lately. Uh, for instance, in our, um, public utilities, this all should come under planning and zoning. We need, we need long-range planning for the city. We cannot just, um, deal with problems as they pop up and put Band-Aids on them, we have to know where we're going with the city, how long we expect it to be here, and then plan for it. We need, we need plans that can be worked, and we need to ensure that the work is done according to plan. That's what I have to offer.
Thank you. Now, the fifth one will, I'm going to open it up to the other Commissioners, so I will start with Commissioner Baca. Do you have any further questions to ask, Mr. Finn?
Yes. Um, what do you think your strengths and weaknesses are to fit in on this board?
I think I've already described those. Number one, I'm here, and that's one of my strengths, and I don't mind telling you what I think and what I research. And my weaknesses, some people think that my, my, uh, tone of voice and my attitude is a weakness, however, I think it's been, uh, developed and honed by twelve years of dealing with city commissions.
Thank you, Ron. Commissioner Clark?
Um, just kind of one comment and one question. Comment I have is, I remember when you were put on that P and C Board, and I was very surprised when you would take it off. Um, that's just a comment, I may think that that was before my time. Can't we get to the mic? But the question I have for you, um, Mr. Finn, is, um, my concern would be, um, you are running for a commission, for this commission, and you're on the P and C Commission as a request, and what happens if you, um, win the vote and you're sitting up here, then we have to replace you on the P and C Board? Do we have to have an alternate person, just because, um, Mr. Finn is running as a City Commission spot two?
He would have to resign from the Planning and Zoning Board if he gets selected for, or elected for City Commission.
So that's the only hesitation that, um, I can see, particularly because then we go, then the, the Commission goes through the process again, putting another person on unless we decide to have an alternate today, and I don't know if we can do that.
Manager Madrid.
Commissioner, I think that, uh, once the Board is set in place, as long as you have enough for a quorum, the, the Board can continue to operate, even if there was a vacancy, and then, and then you, the Commission will just take action to replace that one person. I don't think we need an alternate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Clark. Commissioner Hessler.
You were on the P and C Board once before, can you describe to me that experience? Tell me-
No, I was, I was appointed on, uh, a Tuesday and disappointed on a Friday of the same week, so I was really never seated, uh, because I hadn't been sworn in yet, okay? This was, um, this is, uh, thanks to our former Commissioner, um, Luna, who, uh, engineered that little fiasco. But I was more than willing to serve, and I had made contributions, I had testified at P and C, uh, sessions on issues, and unfortunately, like testifying before you all in, um, public hearings, uh, most of my testimony has gone unheeded and unlistened to. I hope to have that changed by being on one of these two Commissions.
Thank you. Commissioner Zagetti.
Okay, two questions.
You want to get one?
No, no, you can ask them.
Okay, first, um, what do you think about our, about the city of truth or consequences?
What do I think about it? I live here, this is my city, I love this city, I just don't like the way it's operated.
The, uh, the second question, uh, and you have, in the past, I don't think anybody here will, uh, contradict the fact that you have been very critical of the City Commission and the people sitting here, um, no matter who it's been, over the past twelve years, you know, you have not hesitated to be critical of them. Here, and now you're going to be placed on a board, which is an advisory board, to the Commission, and it is the City Commission which makes the final decision, and we've had this problem in the past with Board members who did not tolerate it when the City Commission contradicted their decisions. Could you continue to serve on the Board and behave and conduct yourself in a civil manner if the City Commission disagrees with one of your limitations?
Good question.
This is very interesting, coming from a man who is not elected to this position-
Ron.
-in the first place, okay? I will answer that.
I know, but just answer the question.
Okay? Well, just answer the question. I would expect that because logic and reason occasionally matters in, in the business of the city, that, that would be few and far between. Politically motivated, uh, decisions that, that go contrary to a Planning and Zoning Board should be investigated and not just accepted. Your buddy owning a piece of property and wanting to do something is not your position as a, elected a member of the community, if you are, to make, uh, exceptions for them. Secondly, this Board, this Commission, the Planning and Zoning Commission, are servants of the people, not rulers of the people. So, and as a citizen of the United States, I have a right to say what I say, and I have a right to say it the way I say it, guaranteed by the First Amendment, so if you don't want to be criticized, then don't do things that require criticism.
All right, Mr. Finn, I thank you for your application, and I thank you for your responses to our questions.
You're welcome.
All right, our next applicant is Stanley Ricker.
You got it.
What I'd like to ask you to do, although I didn't ask- What I'd like to ask you to do, although I didn't ask Ron, and I apologize, but I'd like to ask you to give your name and address before I start asking you questions. Again, I do have four questions that I'm asking each one of the applicants, and then the fifth will be a question from each one of the other commissioners. So if I can get you to addresses with your name and address first.
Stanley Rickert, 1705 Carey Street, Truth or Consequences.
Thank you. Again, Mr. Rickert, I would like to thank you for your application to the Planning and Zoning Boards. I know that some of these questions that I will probably be asking you this morning are repetitious of what you filled out on your application, but again, we are doing this publicly, and I would like for the public to be aware of your qualifications and your answers. All right, so my first question this morning is, why did you apply to serve on the City Planning and Zoning Commission?
I wanted to be a part of the city. I wanted to help it and maybe make it better, make it sure, you know, I have needs, and I'm sure, you know, people also who, who are looking for help have, have needs as to what a Planning and Zoning Committee could be beneficial for.
Thank you. The second question, please describe your qualifications to serve on this Planning and Zoning Commission.
Years of experience in construction or researching for information in the matter of ordinances or codes to make sure I'm not violating anything myself, and I've had a back experience of plumbing or construction that might help in, in most matters or some matters. And I think, I don't know, I have a thought of being intelligent at times, but sometimes I wonder, but you know how that goes, you make mistakes, but, you know, you're willing to correct the mistakes and get it over with.
Thank you. The third question, if you are selected, what do you have to offer as a Planning and Zoning Commission member?
I think it was my honesty, for most part. If I don't answer, you know, things correctly or try to get the information and answers for that, if my background, you know, is, is another part of my, my qualifications, to be honest.
Thank you. And my fourth question is, if you are selected as the Planning and Zoning Commission, please describe your role as a Planning and Zoning Commission member as you see it.
I think I could work with the other people, try to come to a conclusion, you know, that would best fit the problems at hand that we're working with or working on, similar to like what these gentlemen had earlier about eastern or western property. You got, you got to, you know, research it all, get, get the facts straight, and make sure, you know, we're doing the right thing for the, or the persons we're, we're working with.
Thank you. And that concludes my four questions. So now what I'm going to do is ask each one of the commissioners if they have a separate question for you, and I will start with Commissioner Zagetti at this time.
Yes, sir. How long have you been in town? Have you lived here in TRC?
Okay, I moved here in, in September of 2017. All right, it's been, but prior to that, I was here 37 years ago, helped, helped a fellow move, move his house and, and set up some property over where I am, close by where I am, and I've always had an inclination of retiring here.
Thank you.
Yeah, that kind of, kind of answered my second question. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Commissioner Heschler.
Mr. Rickert, can you talk a little about your, your background in construction and renovation? Is that your, was that your professional work before you moved to this town, or what did you do? What is your work history?
My work history is, is transportation with, with tractor trailers, also working with distribution of the, what do you call it, warehouse goods for either foods or, or, or construction or, or building materials. Prior to that, I had, you know, plumbing experience. I had worked for a private plumber back in Pennsylvania for four years, and, and also with a general contractor up in Albuquerque in between jobs. I worked for him almost five, five years of Brooks and Clay Construction.
Thank you. Commissioner Clark.
Probably a simple answer, but can you just define what the role in Planning and Zoning would be for you, and how that coordinates or doesn't coordinate with code compliance?
Repeat that, please.
Your role as a Planning and Zoning Commissioner, how would that either cooperate with or not cooperate with code enforcement?
Well, it would have to agree with code enforcement. In other words, if, if I am part of this zoning committee or planning committee, I would have to, you know, read the codes, follow the instructions, and, and move forward with it, with a point that hopefully the others would, would, you know, see my ideas as far as being correct.
Thank you. Commissioner Baca.
What do you think your weaknesses are with working with others?
Weaknesses are, I'd say, you know, trying, trying to set a time and date, you know, to correspond to their needs and abilities to get things accomplished.
All right, that looks like that's concluded. Thank you, Mr. Rickert. It looks like that's concluded our questions. Again, thank you for your application.
You're welcome. Do you think you'll be able to do over the phone with Cynthia Crop?
We're, we're, we're going to get to that, yes, sir.
Okay, because I, I tried to help her.
Yeah, we're, we're going to, we're, we're working on that one.
All right.
All right, thank you. All right, our next applicant is Merrell Dix.
Madam Mayor, maybe just to be helpful, you had mentioned yesterday, Mr. Dunham was just getting a phone call from about like 10.
We've, we've already taken care of that, Jake. Yes, sir? Yeah, we're all on board with that.
All right, okay, I didn't know.
Yes, sir. What I would like to ask this morning of you is that you please give us your name and address, and also, just to let you know, I do have a list here of four questions that I have asked each one of the applicants, and then there will be a fifth question, and that will be each one of the other commissioners will ask you a question. Okay, so at this time, I thank you for your application to be on the Planning and Zoning Board, and if I can get you to give your name and address, and then we'll start asking questions.
Merrell Dix, 715 Ivy Street, TRC.
Thank you. Our first question this morning is, why did you apply to serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission?
Well, I'm really new to TRC. I moved here less than two years ago, and actually came here for the first time two years ago. I know I stopped for gas here a lot of times, like other people have done, but kept going somewhere else, so really fell in love with the community and with the environment, and have since got to know a lot of people, and really just love the neighborhood and everything else about it. I think the things that really appeal to me, like a lot of people, are the hot springs, but also the really nicely preserved downtown environment that's in sync with, with what I remember small towns being when I was a kid. So I grew up in a really small town, too, and, and so it has a familiar heritage that I miss a lot. And I like architecture in general, and I just like that sort of historic environment. So those things are real interesting to me, I guess.
Thank you. The second question is, please describe your qualifications to serve on the P and Z Commission.
I've been a professional archaeologist and cultural resource manager for the past 45 years, so I have a strong historical heritage and management background. I've worked in academic, private, and also federal environments as a planner and as an implementer of plans that were oriented towards the protection and preservation of historic properties. I've prepared multiple national register nominations, including district nominations, and have worked with existing planning documents and implementing those plans in those kinds of environments. And as a, as a Fed, I've worked in planning committees a lot, mostly environmental planning that also includes a cultural resources component, but also dealing with social justice with attendant environments, communities, and things like that, how federal actions might affect attendant communities and, and individuals. Some of those are internal to a single agency, but I've also worked with cooperating agencies, include state and local community, county governments and individuals in those environments. So just about 15 years in the federal government, being a planner of sorts, but also being a cultural resources expert for whatever environments we were dealing with. So that's most of what my applicable background, background would be.
Thank you. Third question, if you are selected, what do you have to offer as a Planning and Zoning Commission member?
I think my experiences are very broad-based. I'm not just focused on those issues that I've been engaged in. I recognize that there are broader issues to consider, so a broad-based approach is, will be part of my, my participation in the planning board. I think it's necessary to consider all sort of aspects of what you might be dealing with in those environments, not just being focused on my specialty and interest, so, and just my background in reviewing documents and preparing documents associated with planning activities.
Thank you. And my fourth and final question is, if you are selected, please describe your role as a Planning and Zoning Commission member as you see it.
I think there's a bit of a learning curve for me, because I've never served on this particular kind of, in this particular kind of environment. I think I'd have to learn a little bit more about what my role would be, but of course, I do bring a level of expertise that a lot of people don't have, probably, that is applicable to this community, given its historic nature, not just the historic district, but we also have historic neighborhoods. So I think I, you know, I could bring that, but I do really need to become aware of what is actually going to be involved.
Thank you. And then the fifth question will be by one of the other commissioners, and at this time I will start with Commissioner Clark.
Most common, I love your email address, by the way.
Oh, thank you. I couldn't think of anything else at the time.
You're aware that the downtown area was given a historical district designation, and it's also state and federal correct, and it does include several homes downtown, too? What would you see that you could bring in addition to, to that? Whether you're talking other neighborhoods or something, you know, as we all know, once something's designated a historical, it's a little more difficult to, to do something in the P and Z department.
It is and it isn't. I think there is a perception that those kinds of designations have really strict parameters. They can, particularly when it comes to, say, federal funding, if any federal or state funding is involved, and the situation changes drastically. In fact, a lot of things can happen, but I think the community should look at that designation as an asset, not a detriment. I have lived and worked in communities very similar to TRC, and worked on these kinds of designations, and seen them morph into a real sort of economic revitalized asset. There are huge numbers of people out there who look at these kinds of designations, these kinds of well-preserved communities, as a place they want to go and visit, and so paying attention to the parameters that those kinds of designations afford, and also to the opportunities that they afford, because there are grant programs and tax incentives for maintaining those kinds of environments. Just ensuring that that environment doesn't get compromised to the point by development or actions by the city that would substantially detract from that designation's integrity, because it is possible for a national registered district designation to be revoked. They are not just static entities. So it's very important to be aware of why that designation was made, to recognize why it was made, and not make decisions that profoundly conflict with those assets for which it was recognized, because you can lose that designation. And I think that the historic district is a really important asset for the community, and I think it could play a really important role in economic development and revitalization for this community.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Heschler.
Yes, sir. This is a P and Z committee, hasn't been around for a while.
That's what I hear, yeah.
How do you see your role, and we kind of talked about that in number four, but I'm more concerned or interested in your ability to lead, or how you, your management style, your leadership skills? How, how do you see yourself in that dynamic, having to start a brand-new committee?
Well, I think, like I say, taking a kind of broad-based, generalized approach, I'm certainly going to want to feel my way into that sort of position, and not just bargain, like I know everything and take over. I know there are, some of the applicants are probably longer-standing community members than I am, pretty new to this environment, but like I say, it's a small town. I grew up in a small town that actually has a historic district designation that makes this look like New York City, and it's very small, and very, much more remote, we don't have an interstate next to us. So, like I say, I've worked in lots of planning committees, multi-disciplinary committees with a lot of different agencies and entities involved, and it's just a, you know, you have to listen, and, but there also has to be resolution, and so reaching kind of logical recommendations for the city council that are based on rational considerations of what we have, what the broad-based issues are, I think is pretty much what my approach would be.
Thank you. Commissioner Zagetti.
Yeah, kind of a different question, and I, I know you've only been here a couple of years, and the whole planning and zoning is a little new to you, but you live up on 715 Ivy. Do you, have you observed any issues in your neighborhood that would seem to indicate an issue with, with zoning or planning? And you don't have to be specific on addresses, if you can kind of just describe in general?
Well, the property we acquired had been abandoned for about 20 years, and while structurally it was, had a lot of integrity, the price was right, but it was in pretty bad shape, and it then vandalized after we, so we knew sort of what we were getting into, but of course, you never know, but I see that there's a lot of that in and throughout the community. They're occupied, dilapidated properties, but they're also abandoned properties. You know, we took that project on because it was a cute little house, it's old, it may have been built before the war, in that environment, and, you know, I'm kind of interested in that sort of thing. I, I think that those kinds of structures are appealing to a lot of people, those historic communities and things like that, but... communities and things like that, but in fact, you know, they are hard to keep, and once they're abandoned, well, you know, those things fall apart pretty quick, so. Any incentives or decisions that would assist landowners with those kinds of issues, landowners who have essentially abandoned their properties or who are deceased and have no recognizable descendants, I think that happens in small towns like this, and particularly ones like I think there's some reoccupation of abandoned buildings. It's a little sketchy and a bit scary. I've seen some signs of that. There are some renter landlords who probably don't maintain their properties as well as they should, probably in a violation of a lot of health and code standards, and occupants probably don't help with that for various reasons, I won't really go into the details. But there's certainly some of that going on on my block and actually across the street from us that we didn't know was going on when we bought the place. In general, though, I think, you know, the neighborhoods are cute, the streets are pretty good. The infrastructure certainly is an issue, but it's, but it's working for us. So, yeah, there would be concerns like that that I would be interested in, in maybe looking at a little harder. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Baca.
What motivates you to want to do this?
I love TRC. I love this little community. It reminds me of a lot of things, and, you know, like I say, I've lived and worked in a lot of small towns, and I think just an urge to participate. I spent most of my life thinking about myself and my job. I'm in semi-retirement now, I'm not entirely retired, but giving back sort of to the community instead of just taking, being public-minded is something that I'm interested in doing.
Thank you, Mr. Merle. That concludes our questions, and again, thank you for your application.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Their next one is Lilis.
And this will be a cross decline.
That's my call line.
You're such a pervert.
I am. That's my next, maybe a seven three.
And I won't speak.
Thank you, gentlemen. If I can ask you, approach the podium. What I am going to ask you to do is state your name and address, and I do have four questions that I have asked each one of the applicants, and they are the same question. And then the fifth will be, each one of the commissioners will be given the opportunity to ask you a question. All right? So if I can get you to state your name and address.
My name is Lilis Urban, 520 North Broadway, Street, Apartment B.
Thank you. First question I have this morning is, why did you apply to serve on the planning, on the City Planning and Zoning Commission?
I applied for the principal reason that I love planning and zoning, and I really love the city of true consequences. I have a background in planning. I have a PhD in biology from New Mexico State University, and then I've been working in land management for fifteen-plus years. I held a position recently with the Bureau of Land Management as a planning and environmental coordinator for the state office. And then I also worked for the Bureau of Land Management in the planning division as a planning analyst with the socioeconomic program. I just love city government, and I believe in the importance of the community serving the commission. I see that the advisory boards are very important to the functioning of the city commission, wherein it would be impossible to expect any person sitting on the commission to have expertise in all of the things that really come to bear in the decision-making process for you, so hence you have an advisory board for electricity and planning and zoning, et cetera. So, yeah, I believe in that process.
Thank you. My second question is, please describe your qualifications to serve on this commission.
I've mingled my answers. So, I suppose not to repeat myself, the only other things to add is I've also worked with city governments for quite a long time in various capacities and across municipalities and different jurisdictional authorities. I worked for the city, New York City Parks and Rec Department. At present, I work for the New Mexico State Parks System at Elephant View Lake State Park as the superintendent, and therefore, you know, I'm familiar with the complexities of stakeholders and processes and legal requirements.
Thank you. And again, this will probably be the same type of answer, but I'm going to ask the question anyway. If you are selected, what do you have to offer as a Planning and Zoning Commission member?
I would think that not only my background and my work experience, but then I think my disposition as well, where it's very important to maintain an atmosphere of diplomacy in city government and composure, and I'm committed to that and committed to working with the, my fellow Planning and Zoning Board members should I be appointed, and having a very open and transparent process for our board meetings, that's important for me.
Thank you. And my fourth and final question is, if you are selected, please describe your role as a Planning and Zoning Commission member as you see it.
So, you know, my understanding of being a member of an advisory board like that is to gather information and understand what our existing laws, codes, and policies say, and also potentially make recommendations to the members of the commission in areas where they may need to be amended or updated, doing a lot of research on aspects related to planning and zoning that are applying to the city's context.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And that concluded my questioning, so now what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask each one of the other four commissioners if they have a question for you, and I will start with Commissioner Heschler.
Hi, Miss Heschler. I have no questions. I just want to thank you for your application. You have a very diverse background, not so diverse, but really pertinent to what we're looking for. So I appreciate your application and thanks for doing that.
Thank you. I'm, yeah, very excited. I've been pestering people for a long time.
Thank you. Commissioner Zagetti.
I had a question, but you answered it with your previous answer, so I'm good here.
Thank you. Commissioner Baca.
I don't have any, but you answered my question as well.
Thank you, sir.
And Commissioner Clark.
I'm going to make one up just because we can't lay it out like that easy. Tell me your thoughts on the live-work conversation that we're having with the downtown area.
Thanks for the question. It's certainly a conversation that, you know, would take longer than however much time I have to reply, but my first response is that we, as a city, particularly this particular city in the context that we find ourselves in, wherein I don't think punishing people is the answer in terms of figuring out how to ensure that there's economic development in the downtown corridor. So, I don't know what sort of discussions have been going on as far as what, what solutions or ideas have been being put forward for the live-work situation in the downtown corridor. I've heard things, it's a small town, so then you don't know who's actually saying what. It happens all the time. So I think that, you know, that TRC, I think its position, I'm really pleased that you guys have come together to reform the Planning and Zoning Board because I think the city is at a point in time where it's particularly important to reform the advisory board because the city is changing. So with the correct constituency on the advisory board, the city will be better posed to grow in ways that are positive for the community, the people that live here now, and for people that are coming to the community. I hear people, I meet people so commonly downtown, and they're visitors, and then I see them the next day, and they're looking for somewhere to live. There's a lot of people who are wanting to move here. So I think there's a lot happening. The town has a vitality right now, and that the less, if there isn't a problem that is apparent, that this, you know, I guess my question would be, what is the problem with the live-work? Like, what evidently is the problem? And if there's a problem, then we can work to develop a potential solution. But right now, I see a lot of positive things happening in the city, particularly in historic downtown, if that helps to, does that answer your question?
I love being, posing a question and getting one back. Yeah, I just, I was curious because you're kind of in that whole realm of doing this, and so, you know, there's probably a personal interest there.
Yeah, I should, maybe if, just to take another moment to respond where, as someone who's personally endeavoring in that, I don't have the kind of money to be able to come into a situation and fully gut renovate a building, make a living quarters, and open the type of business and have the type of living situation that would be ideal in like, you know, I have to do that slowly because that's, because I'm not, I don't have a lot of money. And so it's going to take time, you know, like I work, and then the money, and then I pour it back into my home and building, and then I work, and then I pour it back. So there has to be a recognition that we're not in, say, downtown Santa Fe or downtown LA, or like where we would expect or could see that there's such, that the city's in a place where like, yeah, people, the property values are really high, developers come in, they can buy, and then boom, like immediately renovate their back apartment and open a front business, wherein that's just not what people are that live in TRC. It's going to be a slower process. I wish I had that. I wish I could just throw money at building, but I can't.
Well, I just, I respect your honesty. I appreciate it. Thank you. That was not an easy question.
Yeah, thanks.
And I thank you for your answers. I thank you for your application. Again, I didn't point out that the reason I asked these questions, I do understand that they were probably in your application, but because we're doing this publicly, this way everyone else would hear your qualifications, and I thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Have a good day.
You, too.
All right. Our next one is Richard Dumeck. The next one is a phone one. There you are, Mr. Richard. Please approach the podium. What I'm going to do is, this morning, I'm going, I have four questions here that I will be asking. Again, they're the same questions that everyone has been, everyone else has been asked, and then our fifth question will be by each one of the commissioners. Again, this may be repetitious from what you have put into your application, but because we're doing it publicly, I would like everyone else to be aware of your qualifications. At this time, I am going to ask for your name and address.
Rick Dumeck, 705 Charles Street, Truth and Consequences.
Thank you. And again, thank you for participating and for your application. My first question is, why did you apply to serve on the City Planning and Zoning Commission?
I feel my experience will be very beneficial for the city. I was a general contractor for over twenty-five years and facilities director for over twenty years.
Thank you. My second question, please describe your qualifications to serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission.
As I said, general contractor of twenty-five years. I acted with numerous different agencies, both federal, state, city. I was also the facilities director at the Grand Canyon, constantly working with zoning up here on historical properties. Built Buffalo Thunder Resort Casino up in Santa Fe. I dealt with the Santa Fe County. I dealt with the state of New Mexico. I dealt with the Indian Bureau of Affairs, federal government, gaming regulations, et cetera.
Thank you. Third question, if you are selected, what do you have to offer as a Planning and Zoning Commission member?
A fairness and a fair study of what's being applied for.
Thank you. And my fourth question, fourth and final question is, if you are selected, please describe your role as a Planning and Zoning Commission member as you see it.
As I see it, an advisory board in the city commission, so we look at the applications, look at the applicants, look at the deciding factors, make an informed decision, and pass it on.
Thank you. Now, I'm going to, the fifth question will be from each of the commissioners, and I will start with Mr. Commissioner Zagetti this morning for this afternoon.
All right, I'll go back to this one. You live down here on 705 Charles, you said?
Correct.
Do you see anything in your neighborhood where you think, you know, could be conceived as zoning issues?
Without doubt. Every day, depending on which way I turn on my street.
Okay. Can you, I mean, without you going into specific addresses or something?
Sure. There's an RV, Class A RV parked in a front lawn with sewer pipes going into a holding tank. It's been there for a month and a half. They're not vacationing, they're not visiting.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Baca.
What do you think your greatest weakness is?
I'm impulsive. I shoot from the hip.
Thank you. Commissioner Clark.
So my question to you would be, how do you get along with groups of people?
Very well. I've had to sit on numerous boards. When I lived in Florida Keys, I sat on the District Advisory Council, which is an advisory board towards development council. I've been to so many of these meetings. I swear, as far as done with this, I said, I'm not getting involved, I'm retired, I'm making it easy. We all see where that's going.
It doesn't happen here, does it?
Yeah, I have no problem interacting with people. I believe everyone's opinion has value. We listen to it, we make an informed decision, and we move on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Heschler.
Talk a little bit about your management leadership style.
At the Grand Canyon, I had a direct report of forty at the casino. I had eighty direct reports. I let people do their job as long as they're doing it well. We counsel individually, we don't bring it out in public. You correct things the way it should be corrected in private. I believe people have skills, let them use their skills. If there's a problem, then you step in.
Thank you. Looks like we've concluded our questions and answers. Again, I thank you for your application and thank you for being here.
I thank you for the consideration.
You're welcome. We have one more live person outside, but we're going to do our phone one first because Mr. Bush just showed up. So if I could get Dennis Dunham on the phone, please. Mr. Dunham. Good afternoon.
Yes.
This is Mayor Whitehead. Thank you, thank you so much for waiting patiently for this call. We are, we are now doing interviews. What I am going to do is, I have four questions here that I will be asking and that I have asked each one of the other applicants. I also have a fifth question that I will ask each one of the other four commissioners for their questions, but what I would first like for you to do, and I understand that these may be repetitious to what you've put on your application, but again, we're doing this publicly, this interview publicly, and so I would like everyone to be aware of your qualifications also.
Right, thank you.
At this time, I would like for you to give your name and your address, and then I will and then I will ask you the questions.
Okay, Dennis Dunham, and I live at 811 North Silver in TRC.
Thank you, sir. All right, my first question this morning is, why did you apply to serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission?
Well, I, every place I've lived, I've been involved with some level of, you know, government or helping people. And I was on the Planning and Zoning Committee in Carizozo when I lived there, and left that when I was elected to the city council. And then after I left the city council, because I moved out into the countryside, then I was asked to join the Planning and Zoning Commission of Lincoln County, and I served on that for about two years.
Thank you. My next question is, please describe your qualifications to serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Oh, well, that was sort of what I answered, I guess, in the last question.
Perfect.
Yeah, I do have experience with, with like master plans and, you know, the process of variances and the whole process of what you do on a Planning and Zoning Committee. So I have that experience, and plus I also have experience being in the government of a small town.
Thank you. My third question is, if you are selected, what do you have to offer as a Planning and Zoning Commission member?
Well, experience for one thing. I think, as I'm not, you know, a longtime resident in TRC, I've only been here for two years. I think I bring some fresh eyes in it. I don't have, you know, any, you know, connections and involvements that might bend me one way or another. And I can look at, you know, the situation from legal standpoint and from aesthetic standpoint.
Thank you. And my fourth and final question is, if you are selected, please describe your role as a Planning and Zoning Commission member as you see it.
Well, I think the role of the P and Z is to interpret the ordinances that exist, to look at and follow a master plan that the community has when people bring requests for variances into the ordinances, setbacks or drainage or whatever. And, and you look at it in terms of what the legal things are involved and also the aesthetics of it.
Thank you, thank you for answering my questions. Now, what I'm going to do is, I'm gonna ask each of the other four commissioners if they have a question for you. And I am going to start with Commissioner Baca.
I don't have a question on this one.
Commissioner Baca does not have a question for you at this time. Commissioner Clark.
Did you like being a city councilperson or trustee?
Pardon? I didn't hear the question.
Did you enjoy being a councilperson, a trustee for Carizozo?
Oh, I sure, I did, very much so.
You're nuts.
Thank you. Commissioner Heschler.
Mr. Dunham, what is your professional background?
I taught elementary school for 15 years, nine of which were a school that I started and ran in Surias, New Mexico. And then most of my career after that was starting and running various nonprofit organizations. I started and ran New Mexico Aid Services, starting back at the beginning of the AIDS epidemic in 1985. And then in 1991, I took over running the medical clinic for healthcare for the homeless. And then I took a year-long motorcycle trip to sort of clear my head from all of the, all of the angst that those two jobs created. And, and then went into part-time remodeling and construction.
Thank you. And Commissioner Zagetti.
Yes, sir, and thanks for taking the time to interview with us. But may I ask, what brings you to Truth or Consequences?
Well, I, I loved living in Carizozo. I lived there for 18 years, and it was just, it was incredibly friendly, lovely place to live. But it also was lacking in services. We didn't have doctors, we didn't have a hardware store, we didn't have a grocery store. And, you know, as I'm, what, 76 years old now, I was thinking, I need to go somewhere that at least has a grocery store. And, and I have been passing through Truth or Consequences many times in my jobs and everything. So I, I knew that TRC was a quaint and quirky little town and that seemed to fit what I needed. So that's, that's why we moved here, and we have friends here, too.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunham. That concludes our questions and answers today. Again, excuse me, again, I would like to thank you so much for your application and also for taking the time to do this via phone. I understand your situation, that you could not be here, and thank you. We will be in touch.
Okay, thank you for accommodating.
You are so welcome, have a good day. Bye-bye. I did also have one other that had requested a byphone, which was Carol Cropp, but then she declined. But since then, we do have another applicant that has shown up for his interview, and that is James Bush. Good morning, Mr. Bush.
Good morning to you.
Thank you for being here. What I'm going to do this morning is, or this afternoon, rather, is I'm going to ask that you give your name and address. Once you do that, I have four questions. These are the same questions that I've asked each of the candidates, rather. I do understand that some of these may be repetitious to your application that you've already answered, but as we're doing this publicly, I would like for everyone to be aware of your qualifications. So, and then the fifth question will be asked by one of the other four commissioners. So at this time, let's go ahead and get started with your name and address.
James N. Bush, 618 Ivy Street.
Thank you. The first question that I have for you today is, why did you apply to serve on the Planning and Zoning Board?
Well, primarily because I am a property owner. I have commercial property downtown at 530 Broadway. I'm a 30-year resident of Truth or Consequences and a native New Mexican, born and raised at Las Cruces. I just feel I can give some positive and solid input to planning and zoning.
Thank you. My second question is, please describe your qualifications to serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I guess because I own commercial property and am a property owner here in town.
Thank you. Third question, if you are selected, what do you have to offer as a Planning and Zoning Commission member?
My input as regards this city and its further and future development.
And fourth and final question, if you are selected, please describe your role as a Planning and Zoning Commission member as you see it.
How many, how many will be on the?
There are five, it's a five-board member, five-member board.
Yeah, I think any contribution has to be by listening to all the other members and all of us agreeing or disagreeing with what each of us has to say. I think just an honest listener and then some solid input based on what I hear.
Thank you. Now, for the fifth question, I'm gonna go around the room and ask the different commissioners. We'll start with Commissioner Clark.
What's your favorite motor vehicle?
Model T Ford.
Thank you.
Commissioner Heschler.
Same thing I asked the other candidate, and what is your professional background?
Oh, I've done everything. Right out of high school, class of 65, Las Cruces High School, I joined the Marine Corps. Served as a scout rifleman in Vietnam '66 and '67. I've owned several restaurants, managed quite a few, have been a plumber, a boat builder in Lake Havasu City, Arizona. And now I play with cars. So I'm, I'm, I'm very grounded in everything I've done.
Commissioner Zagetti.
I'll pass on this one.
You'll pass on this. Well, Mr. Bush, that concludes our questions and answers. Did I?
False.
I got a neighbor there.
Commissioner Baca, sorry. You have a neighbor there, Commissioner Baca.
What do you feel, what do you feel your greatest weakness is?
My greatest weakness? I don't know that I have one.
All right, now that concludes our questions and answers. Mr. Bush, again, I thank you for your application, and I thank you for being here.
Okay, thank you all.
You're welcome. And I, was that the end of our applicants? Okay, so we have taken care of all of them.
I don't know.
Are there any of them, you're gonna check outside?
Could we take a like a five-minute recess while we compile our votes?
Yes, at this time, we will go ahead and take a recess for five minutes, and then we will come back. Cards, if so, hand them to Mr. Madrid, please.
When are we gonna find out?
Right now. We're, we're, we're doing this right now, just waiting till the people arrive. Okay, what we're going to do now is Angela has each one, Clerk Torres has each one of the cards, and she's going to read them off. And Mr. Madrid will be putting marks up here for the ones that everyone voted on. So we'll just follow their process and see what happens on this first round.
Lois Urban.
And Ms. Torres, you might want to say, so who, which card are you reading from?
Oh, no.
Oh, yeah, you can't do that.
Yeah, that's why, the cards have names on the top, so she'll announce.
Okay, this one's for Commissioner Heschler. The first one was Lois Urban, second is Merrill Dix, Dennis Dunham, Richard Dumiet, James Bush.
One, two, three, four, five, okay?
Okay, Commissioner Zagetti, Juan Fen, Merrill Dix, Lois Urban, Dennis Dunham, Richard Dumiet.
Two, four, six, eight, ten, four, seven.
Mayor Protenkert, Merrill Dix, Lois Urban, Richard Dumiet, Dennis Dunham, James Bush.
One, three, six, nine, twelve, fifteen, the two, the?
Commissioner Baca, Lois Urban, Richard Dumiet, Merrill Dix, Dennis Dunham, James Bush. Mayor Whitehead, James Bush, Lois Urban, Dennis Dunham, Richard Dumiet, Dan Ricker. Announce it?
Okay, so we have?
Five.
One, two, three, four, five. We have five members on the first ballot. Congratulations. I'm gonna announce them. Richard Dumiet, Dennis Dunham, Lois Urban, Chris Sisney, I'm sorry, Merrill Dix, James Bush. One, two, three, four, five.
Perfect.
So I will, I will ask for a vote to confirm James Bush, Merrill Dix, Lois Urban, Dennis Dunham, and Richard Dumiet.
And I will, I will go ahead and announce those two, all right? At this time, the following are the ones with the highest numbers. We have James Bush that got four votes. We have Merrill Dix that got four votes. We have Lois Urban with five votes. We have Dennis Dunham with five votes. And we have Richard Dumiet with five votes. At this time, this will be the Planning and Zoning Commission. I will now stand for a motion appointing these five members to the Planning and Zoning Board. And do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept these five new members to the Planning and Zoning Board. Is there any further questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. At this time, these individuals will be in touch with Manager Madrid, who will give them directions and ideas of where they proceed forward at the next meeting. And he may want to comment on that now. I will go ahead and turn it over to Manager Madrid.
Yes, Mayor, I think we'll call for an organizational meeting where I will give the members a brief introduction as to their function and their duty. We'll review the ordinance. I think we'll have an election of officers. I will expect them to have their own officers, appoint their own secretary, and keep records as a board should. I may have some type of other orientation from someone outside the city that's experienced in planning and zoning to give them a better background or at least some information from the municipal league as to the function of a Planning and Zoning Commission to get a more broad viewpoint of what their authority or function is in support of the commission and in support of the community also. So that'll take a little bit of planning, but I think that they already have a scheduled meeting date. We'll have to find out about that.
Usually, they used to meet the first Tuesday of each month at 5:30. That's what I'm like, previously has a board. I don't know if you guys, if they wanna stick with that, or they don't want to.
I don't think that we'll meet a publication to have it on that date. We'll call a special meeting before the end of, before the end of March, so we don't wait so long, and have that organizational meeting. And then we'll take it from there. And we'll always be available in support of the commission and for, to provide information, or to consult, or to get advice. It's gonna be a learning process for everyone, so we'll proceed forward, Mayor.
Thank you. And I thank all the applicants, I thank the newly elected board members, and I wish you well in your, your process.
Did you already make the motion and vote?
Uh-huh, yes. We, we're done. All right, the next item under new business, item E2, discussion, action, negotiation. All right, the next item under New Business, item E2, Discussion, Action, Negotiation, and Award of Contract for Landscape Services. Manager Madrid.
Mayor Commissioners, a while back, we published a request for proposals for landscaping services. This is to do work primarily that our Parks Department is either not equipped or not trained to do. I'll give you an example. We don't have the proper equipment or training for pruning tall trees. And other places may call their electric department over and stick a guy up in the crow's nest with a chainsaw and tell them to have at it, but we don't want to do that. We want to make sure that our employees are safe and that we take care of our trees properly too. We don't have an arborist on board either. So, there's some things that we need some help and some advice with. That doesn't mean that we share, that we want to pawn off any of our work. We are also doing things, and I'll pick on the Parks Department, to actually save the city money. And while this contract is not for a specified amount, this is to have two contractors available on an as needed basis. But I want to let the commission and the public know that right now, we're in the process for the remodeling of Ralph Edwards Park. There's a demolition involved in removing sidewalks, dead trees, letting and shaping of the turf, the removal of the old sprinkler systems, all those kind of things. The city's going to do that itself. And we're going to save tens of thousands of dollars in that. In cooperation with the street department, maintenance, with electricity, all the departments are going to get together and do that demolition ourselves and save a bunch of money that we can dedicate to when we rebuild the park. So, I know that's not entirely related to this, but it does show that we're not just trying to spend money, we're doing things on the other end to save it also. But I'm asking for today is that you allow me to negotiate with both companies and enter into a contract with one, with both, or with neither one, depending on how negotiations go. But we want to have someone that's able to perform the services that our Parks Department shouldn't. That's what I'm asking for today.
Thank you. Do I have any questions, comments, or concerns?
Do you have a special line item in the budget for that?
Yes, we do.
I think it's a good idea having two on board because then they realize there is somebody else out there that could be doing the work and that could work to our advantage.
Exactly.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, I will stand for a motion to negotiate, to authorize Manager Madrid to negotiate and award a contract for landscaping services as needed.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. The third item under E3, New Business, is Discussion, Action, Approval of the Law Enforcement Protection Fund Application. Chief Apodaca, thank you for sitting there patiently all day.
That's a lot of business ahead of me. Or good afternoon, I should say to everybody. Annually, we apply for and have always received law enforcement protection funds. This year, we're applying for $26,000, which is zero match, kind of a no-brainer in my opinion, that pays for law enforcement training and law enforcement equipment. And I need the commission's approval and the mayor's signature to complete this application.
Thank you. Do they have any questions, comments, or concerns regarding this application for law enforcement protection fund money? If hearing and seeing none, I will stand for a motion to approve said application.
Who?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the Law Enforcement Protection Fund application in the amount of $26,000, as noted by Chief Apodaca. Are there any further questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you. And, oh yeah, and next year, thanks to the state legislature, this fund will be, instead of based on officers, yada, 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 every agency will get $45,000 extra.
Nice. Nice, congratulations. All right, our next item on the agenda this afternoon is item F1, Ordinances, Resolutions in Zoning, Discussion, Action, Authorizing Approval of Resolution Number 29, 1920, Confirming the City of Truth or Consequences, to Participate in the Department of Transportation Municipal Arterial Program Local Government Road Fund. Manager Madrid.
Tracy.
Tracy.
She looks like one of those award shows for you. Call her name and she comes up to accept that trophy.
Mayor, Mayor Proton Commissioners, it's the time of year for us to apply for the MAP funding. We are selecting Third Street and Gold, Commissioner Heschler, Third Street and Gold for our MAP application. Third Street and Gold does meet all the requirements of MAP. The project's located on the city ICIP. It qualifies under a major street of particular service to state highways in accordance with their NMDOT Local Government Handbook. It's the primary route to and from our hospital off of Highway 51. We're applying only for design funds at this time. The roadway's approximately 2,175 linear feet and will be an expensive reconstruction project. Funding rules require ADA compliance, which translates to new sidewalk, ADA wheelchair ramps where there is none presently, which is pretty much the entire street. The resolution is required as part of the application process. This will be the first step. We'll have to reapply for funding when we get that. It does require planning and engineering due to the cost. And so, at this time, we recommend approval of the resolution. May I stand for any questions?
Thank you. Are there any questions from the Commissioners, from Ms. Tracy or Manager Madrid?
No question.
Question.
Will you engineering Tracy, will that include the water lines and things of that nature underneath? I noticed that several water breaks on that street.
So, this is only for NMDOT planning funds, so technically, no, but we are trying to collaborate some design as other projects open up. For instance, our downtown water lines, the USDA funding is specifically only for the replacement of the water lines. But we do have a colonius application in process right now and being reviewed to repave the streets that pertain to those water lines. And if that funding is also awarded, then we can collaborate that design process as an all-in-one project, even though it would be from two separate funding sources. So, it would save a little bit on the design. We wouldn't have to go back out to RFP, hire a second engineer possibly to collaborate with this engineer. So, it'll all depend on if we're awarded, what the cycle is for this, and if it coincides with the cycle that we can apply for water funding as well.
Well, I know you guys understand the process.
I will say that in areas that we aren't getting the funding, we will be reviewing. I mean, if we're going to tear up a street and the street's open, then we would look at those lines at that time and depending on where we're at within the budget and what our water department has available and what, if we don't have grant funds available, there is the possibility of looking at loan funds with minimal or zero interest, as we've received before, to maybe do those at the same time. So, we'll try to collaborate.
Thank you. Are there any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the approval of Resolution Number, I mean, sorry, I need a motion first. All right, do I have a motion to approve Resolution Number 29, 1920, Confirming the City of Truth or Consequences, to Participate in the Department of Transportation Municipal Arterial Program Local Government Road Fund Program, as noted by Tracy? Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Is there any further questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, would you please call a rule?
Honorable Attorney.
Aye.
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 Motion carries, and I thank you. Uh-huh. Next item is G, Reports. City Manager.
Mayor Commissioners, I have a few different things to talk about. The first one, as I mentioned just a couple of minutes ago, is the park demolition at Ralph Edwards Park. That's going to start on March the ninth. We will be announcing that aggressively as we get closer to it. We're going to make sure that the park is secured and safe. We're going to make sure that we don't keep any equipment in there overnight or any open holes that could be a danger to the public during that time. So, we will be in and out every day. We're going to try and isolate parts of the park that we won't be touching during the demolition so they can have continued use. For example, the basketball courts. We don't want to interrupt any more than we have to. The city departments will be coordinating on that together, again, that's starting March ninth. I had a preliminary meeting with a task force that I put together to explore the issue regarding plastic bags and developing an ordinance for that. So, there's been some research done. The ordinance is from Pous, Silver City, Santa Fe, and Albuquerque, have been compiled and given to some of our members. A preliminary discussion was had about what to develop. The guidance that I've given them is that we want everyone's input. As a matter of fact, we have a town hall meeting tomorrow night here at the Chamber at six o'clock for anyone that wants to provide some input regarding plastic bags and any other type of issues related to that. I've asked the members to come up with options, not a single plan, but options from every point of view to present to the commission. And we need to consider the business owners, we need to consider the environment, we need to consider the consumer, and any other viewpoints that I might fail to provide, they're responsible for coming up with and collaborating on. Our city attorney is going to lead the formulation of that ordinance. And when we do have viable options that are ready for presentation to the commission, we'll at least present them, even if they're not in final form. We will try and determine, we'll try and balance the community needs versus the practicality of the ordinance. So, that's where we are in that. A few meetings ago, based on some concerns from residents, I was asked to revisit with the Department of Transportation in regard to the parking issue that we have downtown and traffic flow in general. That was done, as a matter of fact, Tracy and I met with them on Valentine's Day. It took a little while to get the meeting, but we did. And the viewpoint that was given was that is pretty much a dead issue because that is a business loop. A business loop by the state is defined as an alternative route to an interstate. And because if there was any reason to shut down I-25 between Williamsburg and I guess exit 79, that those thoroughfares need to be able to handle all the traffic that would normally be on the interstate. So, speed bumps is not an alternative, additional lights, traffic lights are not an alternative, and the speed limits have been reduced as far as they're going to be. So, I think, and I agree with the solution that they have, is protecting the pedestrians and drivers by extending the line of sight. I don't think that we're going to see any more changes from DOT in regard to that. So, I think that that issue has been resolved. I did get one question as to where do we go from here? And I informed them that this is at the district level, they can appeal to the chief highway engineer. I think they're not even called that anymore, they're called the cabinet secretary for DOT, and that information was provided. So, locally, I think we have exhausted all of our administrative remedies.
Thank you.
The next thing that I wanted to talk a little bit about is I'd had a real good discussion with the leader in charge of trying to establish the hemp processing company here in town, Mr. Lovelace Johnson. And we had a real good discussion on assisting them with guiding through the process, for example, on the demolition of the interior of the building, any utility incentives that the city could provide, developing the labor workforce, things like that. It looks real promising. We have established through a little bit of effort and through some assistance from Bruce Swingle at the county. He's a very good resource also, and I think we're going to develop a good relationship and it's going to end up a shot in the eye for TRC in the form of jobs. The last thing that I wanted to announce, the city has undertaken a lot more extensive training, internal training for different things. During the month of November, we sent half a dozen, six to 10 people, maybe 12 people, I forget, to OSHA certification training for safety. And that was done in Albuquerque. So, we got a lot of our people safety certified in all types of hazard mitigation, hazard recognition, best practices for safety, use of personal protective equipment, all those kind of things that make our employees safer. We are also going to be undertaking more training so that we can train ourselves. Our, some of our department supervisors are going to become certified instructors so that they can teach their employees to achieve CDL certification for driving. For our safety officer just became a certified Red Cross CPR instructor, so she'll be able to teach all of our employees CPR and lifesaving techniques. So, we're trying to develop our employees internally through methods like that in hopes that we have a longer-lasting plan for keeping our employees safe and also being able to take action if we had to in the public arena because we have that exposure all the time. Sometimes we are in a position where we can't assist and we want to, but we want to do it right. Other than that, we will be commencing our annual budget preparation process in the next few weeks. Our new finance director is going to take a little different approach than we did last year because we're going to have a little more time, a little more information, and she wants to build our budgets from the ground up. And to an extent, recognize our experience factors through historical spending, but not automatically accept that as justification for future spending. Our justification is going to be a lot more involved, it's going to take a little bit longer, and it's going to be a little bit tougher for each department to justify their budget, but that's what we want. So, that process will be beginning soon. The last thing that I want to say in my manager's report is, and this will happen in more detail at an appropriate time, I can't express enough appreciation, I'm looking at you, Commissioner Clark, to the Commissioners that are not going to be here after today. I appreciate your welcoming to the community for me. I appreciate your support. I even appreciate your criticism, believe it or not. I think I would have been happy keeping this team for 10 years. I know that's not the way it works. And I know I can't pick the Commissioners, but I believe that we've made some progress thanks to your forward thinking. And I know it isn't easy. The toughest decisions are the ones that you know people are against, but you have to make them anyway. And I appreciate that, especially on a day like today. I think that the entire body is responsible for moving the city in a positive direction. And you can actually see it starting now. It's taken a while, and I know it's taken me a while, to be able to get a grip on everything. And maybe I still don't have that yet, but it sure isn't because of the lack of support from this body. So I just wanted to say thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Attorney Rubin, do you have a report?
I'll echo what Mr. Drew Connaughton said, Commissioners. It's been a pleasure working with you and I wish you good luck.
Thank you. The next item is commission report, and I'm just going to jump in and be first on the list today. Again, as we all know, today is the last city commission meeting for two of our Commissioners. Mayor Pro Tem Clark, which I have worked very close with for the last six or seven years, and I've known for a very long time, and I appreciate everything she does and everything she's done for our community and all the help and support that she has given me while I have been, you know, sitting here as a Commissioner, be it Mayor Pro Tem or Mayor. Commissioner Heschler, he's a newcomer to the seat. He's only been here four years, one term. He's been a great asset. He's brought a lot of, a lot of great things to our community and a lot of knowledge from where he's been and where he's going. And I hope that he enjoys the rest of his time off with his lovely wife and family. And I hope they get a lot of traveling in and have a great time. Commissioner Zagetti, well, he's a newcomer. He was recently put on board back January of 19, and he chose to run for the seat again. So this could be his last sitting and this could not be his last sitting. But I want to thank him also for everything that he has brought to the table and all his, you know, his knowledge and everything. I know he served on many of our boards with our community, and he's been a big asset as well as the others. I am going to miss each and every one of you. I've enjoyed working with you tremendously. And I wish you well. I do want to invite the three of you back unless Commissioner Zagetti is back here in his seat on March 11th. I'd like to invite you back to our next regular commission meeting. We do have a few presentations, and we would like to see you in the audience and see your smiling faces. So please come back and join us in our next meeting on March the 11th. 9 o'clock promptly, we start. And again, I also would like to thank all the applicants that applied for all these boards, especially our recent new board, new old board that came back, planning and zoning. I think that they are a good group. I think they will work well with the commission and with the community. And again, thank them and congratulations. We do have a town hall meeting here with the manager at 6:00 PM here in the commission chambers. So please get down here and visit with him. And that concludes my report. So let's start with Commissioner Zagetti.
As I sat down here this morning, or this morning, it came in, you know, that old Rolling Stones song came into mind. You know, this could be the last time. And, well, be as it may, you know, who knows what next week will bring. But it has been a pleasure this last year, and I appreciate the confidence of the commission members that elected me to fill this position. If I'm back next year, so be it, you know. I have a couple of comments. First, and it is a reply to something the city manager said, because I am, you know, I don't know how many DOTs we have up there because the comments he got back on the Main Street issue fly totally against what they were saying when they brought up their plan for the traffic circles on Diet Street. It's the same thoroughfare, okay? And they're saying, oh no, we can't slow down traffic. We need to be able to handle that. Yet they're going to put three tiny traffic circles, one-way traffic circles in up here and slow down the speed limit to 15 miles an hour between them. To me, that's, it's the same stretch of road, and they're applying different standards to those two stretches. And, you know, that does not make me happy, especially when the overwhelming response from the community is, you know, we don't want that. All right, so that, set that aside. The other thing is, I, last week, I attended a meeting sponsored by our local substance use, it's now the Substance Use Coalition. But it's a lot of people from around town, mental health professionals. They're working with Olive Tree now. It's a, it's a great group of people looking at the issues, the mental health issues that lead to substance abuse. And they had other people in there invited in from the state, from the J-Jack. There were more than 35 people at this meeting, which was immense. And everybody came in and they brought, presented what they did, what their resources were. And all of this was collected and collated and is being published in a resource directory so that people throughout the town, the social services, law enforcement, the hospital, they all know who to call when certain types of issues come up. And I think this is a great group. And I don't know how much the city can, you know, do to support them, but anything we can do to help them out, you know, would be just great.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Clark.
Well, I'm kind of looking forward to not being here. Does that have to look at you anymore? No. Let me turn this back on because it started the meeting. No, it's been a real pleasure working with you, Mr. Madrid. I really am going to miss that.
I appreciate that.
Yeah. Yeah, and I, you know, I just like having a woman on this board. It's like, you know, it kind of adds that, that, you know, here's one way of looking at it, here's another way of looking at it. And Mayor Whitehead, you've always just been such a pleasure, even though we hit like this initially. It sure worked its way out.
Yes, it did.
Yeah. And Heschler, I'm jealous because you're going somewhere and I got to go back to work. Zagetti missed a lot, one way or the other. And you, I miss you too. Nobody can nudge. Anyway, thank you for being so supportive of me. And Angela, congratulations. I think you're doing a great job. You will miss, you will miss.
Likewise.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Commissioner Heschler.
Senator, thank you. I just want to just say that working as your Commissioner the past four years has been a highlight of my life and my career. So I really appreciate the opportunity to serve this community and I'm very grateful for the confidence this community bestowed on me to like me to this position. But I'm going to listen. I want to thank Mayor Whitehead, Mayor Pro Tem Clark for your leadership. Coming into a position like this, green like I did, it was nice to have a two-man kind of guy directing to some degree where we needed to go. So I appreciate that very much. And it's been a pleasure working with Mr. Zagetti and Mr. Marshall. We had a good commission. We had a great one. Definitely appreciate it. Morris, you were great fun. Thank you for accepting the position and being here for us. Every day I, if I ended up being a position, we'd be on our own. So thank you for that. And you have a great staff. I really appreciate Tracy. I appreciate the chief and many of the employees that you have. And the attorney group has done a wonderful job for us since I've been here. So I'm happy, I'm happy to leave, but I'm sad to leave as well. So with that, I have a parting gift. And the gift is this. One of the things I wanted to start before I left, and we've had several meetings, is the Sierra County Spaceport America Economic Advisory Board. This is a group that we want to meet regularly. I'd like to pass my role on that committee to another Commissioner and I'll talk with you about it once the election is over. This is, so this group meets as information only. It's not really subject to an Open Meetings Act because there's no budget. There's no quorons involved, and we don't really make any decisions. But it's an opportunity for this group or somebody in this community to interact regularly with Spaceport America and to find out what's going on out there and who the new clients are, who the new businesses are, what special events are going out there, what's happening in the future, how it's going to impact our community. And the Commissioners' role that will serve on this board will get that information from Spaceport America directly and then bring it back to this commission as hopefully their report on a five-monthly basis. So that's what I would be doing if I were to continue to serve. And so I'm looking forward to passing that on and looking forward to your input on who the next Commissioner is going to be that's going to serve in that capacity. Incidentally, the people that are on this committee would be a Commissioner from TRC, a Commissioner from Elephant Butte, from Sierra County, also the Chambers of Congress is from Elephant Butte and TRC, and one of the board members from Main Street. So they're all either in an official capacity or in a nonprofit. But this will save Spaceport from having to talk with each entity individually. They'll meet collectively with all these folks and be able to disseminate this information all at one time. So looking forward to passing it on this morning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Barca.
I want to thank you guys for taking me under your wing, teaching me all that you have. Good luck to you guys. Also want to congratulate the applicants that were picked for the PMZ board. Good luck.
Thank you. At this time, that concludes our meeting. The next item on our agenda is item H, executive session. We have two items. H1, threat independent litigation pursuant to 1015187, and H2, real property, various properties pursuant to 1015188. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
I have a motion to eat pizza.
Okay. I have a motion in a second. Is there any further questions, comments, or concerns? If not, Madam Clerk, would you please call and roll?
Mayor Whitehead?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. We will now go into executive session as soon as our room clears.